Good evening, everybody. I'm Juan Aguilar, council member. Welcome to the City Council's regular meeting for October 6th, 2020. It is currently 7:02 PM. So please stand for the pleasure of allegiance. Ready? Begin. Please remain standing. Please observe a moment of silence for our military and our first responders. Thank you. Can I get roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista.
President.
Councilmember Aguilar.
President.
Councilmember King.
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia.
President.
For the record, Mayor Samra is not in attendance, and his absence is excused.
Just to add that, Mayor Pro Tem is not in person. I'll be running the meeting in his stead. Council, any changes to the agenda?
I do.
Go ahead, Councilmember Batista.
There are some things under the consent agenda that I'd like to have discussed or looked at again, just so that there's some clarification for our public, and that would be items one through four. More specifically, there are some just on the warrant register that I just want to ask to see what they are attached to.
I can see one, items one, two, three, and four? Okay, so we'll pull them.
Hold on, I got a question with Mayor Pro Tem. So why are we pulling, are we pulling them off the consent agenda at this time, or?
You want to pull them out for discussion, Maria?
Just for separate discussion, like Mayor Pro Tem.
That's fine with me. I'm not sure about everyone else.
Councilmember King, is that okay with you?
Yes, that works.
Okay, so we'll pull those items for separate discussion on the consent agenda. Okay, move along. I'm asking the reports. Could I, did I just, uh, verbal on who's here presently in regards to staff, department heads that are via telephone?
Recreation's here.
Anthony, Public Works.
Vanessa Portilla with Finance.
Andy Hatch, Planning.
Brian, Fire Department.
Manny Pellegrina, BIP Area Visual.
Close that again, please repeat.
Manny Pellegrina with BIP Area Visual.
And Trevor Tanahuchi with the City Attorney's Office. Thank you, guys. Okay, let's move on to Supervisor Rodrigo Sinosa. I don't believe he's on the line. Any report? Oh, he just shut up. We'll move on to city staff announcements and reports. Jackie, anything to report?
Sorry, I had you on mute. Good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone's doing well. I just had a couple of quick things to report out of the Recreation Department. At our last Recreation Commission meeting, we did receive a proposal from the Livingston Lions Club that they would like to assist us with the quarter of trees to hopefully make it bigger and better this year. And I did. At our last Recreation Commission meeting, we did receive a proposal from the Livingston Lions Club that they would like to assist us with the quarter of trees.
Can you guys please mute your phones if you're on the line?
Go ahead, the right call.
Once again, if you're on the line, joining the meeting, please mute your phone. Can you guys please mute your phones if you're on the line?
I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm not even sure if you guys heard me. Did you hear me?
We heard you, Jackie. I think, yeah, somebody left their phone unmuted, but continue on, please. Thank you.
Okay, and so I just wanted to let you know that the Rec Commission did think that was a fabulous idea. They did propose ways that they were going to hopefully get more trees, and they thought in light of, you know, our different budget issues, that they would actually pay for the trees and collect the money from people so it would really have no impact on the Rec Department. So I did want to let you guys know about it, and if you needed me to bring it before you, in a staff report or something a little bit different. Otherwise, like I said, the Rec Department was really, or Rec Commission was supportive of it and will let them run with it, and hopefully we'll have 100 trees this year instead of 50.
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
The other issue, or not one, not issue, the wonderful thing that we're working on is our 100-year anniversary, and opportunities keep opening up for us, and we are still looking for families that have at least four generations that have been here in Livingston that can give me a call because we would like to do like a family scrapbook for, you know, the different generations on, you know, what brought them to Livingston. You know, like even you, Juan, maybe your great-grandfather or your grandfather, because you guys would already have four generations here. And that's about it. If you guys have any questions, I'd sure be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions, Maria?
I just have a comment, so I just want to give a shout out to the Livingston Lions Club and on behalf of, well, I'm a new member. But thank you to Donna Duffy for coming in and presenting that to the Rec Commission. I think it's a really outstanding idea, and I am in support of what they're trying to accomplish for the city. Again, it's for our whole community to make something so beautiful that we have downtown a bigger and better. You know, we did have our hometown Alex McCables who did that last year, but again, maybe stepped in a little bit too late, so I'm glad that it's being brought forward ahead of time so that we can think of it, support it, and know that we appreciate all our Service Club members there at the Livingston Lions.
Thank you. Councilmember King? Any questions for Jackie?
No, no questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, any questions for Jackie?
No.
Okay, and just for me, I think it's a great idea, the more collaboration and cooperation we have with other groups and organizations. That's awesome. Just a quick question, just in general, in regards to Halloween coming up. Is the city planning to do anything, or is the Rec Department planning to do anything? I think that there's a trunk-or-treat going on in Winston and other cities that are doing things similar to that. Are we planning to do anything, Jackie?
You know, in light of the spread, we've, I mean, this is just our department's opinion is, and you know how many people are downtown? I mean, we just felt like it would be, especially if we're just starting to open up to have thousands of kids downtown going from small space to small space. We were even trying to figure out how to spread it out, and we just feel like it would be safer for the kids to go house to house because they're so spread out versus coming downtown. So we have made no plans on doing trunk-or-treat just in light of the safety of our kids and the community.
Oh, good, absolutely. I know it's well-attended and every year, and yeah, you're right, it's packed and many, many kids there. Thank you so much, Jackie.
You're welcome.
If you others on the line, Fire Department? Anything to report?
Good evening. No official report, just, oh, I've been gone for seven weeks. I'm coming back. However, some good news is the Type 6 was gone for nearly 60 days out on them fires. It just came back today, so it was well-used and getting it back and getting it ready to go again. If you guys have any questions.
Councilmember, if you have any questions? Councilmember King? Mayor Pro Tem Garcia?
Hey, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember King?
Yes. Well, I really got nothing to report, but I have a few concerns that citizens have complained to me. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, but we're talking about, any questions for the Fire Department right now?
No, I'm sorry, nothing for the Fire Department.
No, okay. Mayor Pro Tem Garcia?
Negative, I'm good.
For me, welcome back, Captain Alves. Glad you're back and ready to go. Just could you explain real quick why it's good that the Type 6 was out for about six weeks, just real quick?
Yeah, it's really good because first off, it allows for this California State Mutual Aid Agreement, so we're able to go out and help other departments whenever, obviously, the major wildfires have been devastating throughout California. So we're able to send out a piece of equipment to help, you know, obviously, the counties and the cities in need. And then also with that, there was some reimbursement to help, you know, we get a certain amount of money back, or money the city returns from renting it out to use, and so it does help reimburse the, you know, Fire Department funds and some of the maintenance and cost that goes with that.
Awesome, Captain. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Aguirre, I got a quick question real quick for the Fire Department.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, you know the Type 6 was out for 60 days, and the money that we're going to recover from that, is that money going to go to a certain account, or we go use that for a fire station?
Probably a finance question?
I can answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, go for it.
So whenever we started renting out equipment, last couple of years ago, whenever we took out the engine, engine 96 E1, we worked with Jose, the city manager, to set up an account where that money comes in. It helps replace the current aging fleet so we could try to meet NFA standards. And so that money comes in and is set aside to help, this way, whenever we do replace the fleet, it wouldn't be such a financial burden for the city to replace, you know, engine or the truck that are both coming up and will be able to replace, you know, in the not-so-distant future.
Thank you, Captain. Uh, I think we established a fleet replacement account some time ago, so that's definitely going to help our replacing our older engine and trucks soon. Anybody else on the floor, any other departments I missed that are currently on the phone? Okay, how about here in person, Public Works, anything to report?
Yes, good evening, council, city manager, members of the public. I do not have a formal presentation this evening, but I do have some items I would like to update council and share with the public. The first item, our slurry seal project is completed. We did the final walkthrough today with the contractor, created a punch list. They did a great job. One of the items on the punch list is that their sweeper will be out to sweep all the slurry sealed roads to pick up the fines and small material leftover. Item two, I'm hearing from the community that there have been some concerns about mosquito issues. I wanted to just inform the public that if you do notice an increase of mosquito activity within your subdivision around your house, you can call the Merced County Mosquito Abatement Center. Their phone number is 722-1527. Again, that is the Merced County Mosquito Abatement Center. Their phone number is 722-1527. If they're called, they'll come out and investigate and spray if needed at no charge to the residents. Item three, we have our annual tire mattress collection event scheduled for Saturday, October 24th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Event will be held at 2238 Walnut Avenue, which is our Public Works scorpione. Nine tires per resident will be accepted. If you have the rim on there, that's okay. If you could bring it with a rim, we'll accept it. No tractor tires. Please bring proof of residency, such as your driver's license, utility bill. Also, the mattresses, we'll be accepting up to five mattresses total from our residents, per resident. That could be three mattresses, two bog springs, a total of five. Item four, Public Works is currently working on Campbell Boulevard. Staffs performing some minor asphalt repair, as well as cleaning our storm inlets and performing some crack sealing. Campbell will be closed to through traffic October 6th at the A from 7:30 AM to 4:00 PM, but opened up nightly to traffic. That's it for the update. We'd be happy to answer any questions that council, the public may have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Maria? Uh, Councilmember King?
Yes, we talk about tractor tires. Does that mean semi trucks also, or tractor as in farming tractors?
Um, I'm seeing, I'm, farming tires, like the big, big tractor tires, but we have been accepting the semi tires.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, any questions?
No.
Any questions from the public?
This was, this will be October 24th, which is on a Saturday from 8:00 AM to 12:00.
I just have a couple of questions for you. As for city manager, are we able to put this on social media? Reminders like on our city Facebook, so we could, you know, advertise that. It's a really good opportunity.
Good question, Councilmember Aguilar. We actually do promote it on our face, on our social media, so we'll make sure the staff, you know, sends out alerts, even though it's already on there, just so that people see it pop up again. So, thank you.
Awesome, and maybe our website too. I'm sure you probably guys have it there already. Another quick question. I know that obviously there's been some work on Briarwood in regards to the road. Just in general, because people were asking, are we planning to do any other roads? Sixteen, any other work on roads in general in the city coming up?
Yes, yeah, so we will refer to our five-year capital improvement road management plan that we've created, and every year we'll be performing certain work, whether it's crack sealing, asphalt repair, a slurry seal, ADA improvement.
Which is part of the pavement management system, and based on that, the different roads and what they need to be done is generated. And then they try to squeeze as much as they can before the bad weather.
Perfect, guys, thank you. Another question. Somebody was asking about the corner here on B Street and Main Street, next to, right out where the little shopping center, I mean, the little market's at. I guess there's Mr. Trip Haster's there possibly. Was there an issue there? I don't know if you guys have looked at it or asked if you've any comments about it? Yeah, just right here, this one.
He's specifically referencing B Street and Main, the Clairs. So that, yeah, that intersection there, we actually looked at that. And so what we're looking at trying to do is address, have enough funds and address both sides, because just addressing one side, it'll create another issue for us on the other side. So it is something that was brought to our attention, and we are looking at doing some improvements there.
Awesome, thank you so much. Just whenever you guys come up with a plan or solution, if you guys could bring it back up and we could update the public on regards to that concern.
Sounds good.
All right, guys. Anything else, Anthony? Good?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, finance, anything to report?
Good evening, council members, members of the public, staff. This is Vanessa Portilla with the Finance Department. My item that I wanted to share tonight is not quite in the finance side, but it is a showcase of the updated City of Livingston webpage. We conducted this update with, in collaboration with all of our city departments, and we have the page that, it is coming up. Users can find us at cityoflivingston.org. Also, the page, the previous webpage address, which was livincencity.com, is also a valid domain that will redirect you to the current webpage. And the, and some of the items that I wanted to just highlight is that this webpage refresh will, is 100% ADA compliant. It meets all of the compliance requirements for the American Disabilities Act, so if anybody that has special needs has access to this webpage and it's fully functional. At the same time, it is a webpage that showcases more of a personal touch of this, of our city with pictures and just landscapes of the city's surroundings. So it is also something very, it puts a personal touch to our webpage and our, showcasing our community. On the other token, this webpage is also mobile device compliant, so it has, it adjusts very quickly if you're pulling it up in a mobile device, and so it's easy to navigate and view for those users that may want to reach us in, through a tablet or a cell phone. So we have completed this. It is, we have different quick links to items that are, are the frequently used buttons, so it's easy to access, easy to use, and I encourage all of our residents and all of our staff and council to navigate and go through the page. That's all I have.
Very nice. Public, have any questions for Finance Department? Councilmember Batista, any questions? Councilmember King, any questions?
I'm sorry, it took me a minute to get unmuted.
All right, Jackie?
No, this is Donna Duffy, 1616 Sapphire. I have been on the new website, and I want to just thank the team that built it to the response of my initial comments of navigation concerns. They have all been corrected, and I think it looks a lot better. Thank you.
Councilmember King, anything, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Mayor Pro Tem Garcia?
Negative, I'm good.
For me, I agree, it looks awesome. Good job, everybody that participated and updated the website. Good job. Anything else, guys?
Just one comment, Councilmember Aguilar. So for instance, for all those individuals that want to access any of our master plans, forms, they're all listed there. This is an ongoing progress of the, so there's, there might be a little bug here and there. If you find one, please let us know so we can address it. But again, it is very user-friendly, and we certainly would love to get your feedback, so thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Let's move along. Police Department, anything to report?
Evening, council, members of the public, Chief Soria of the Police Department. I just wanted to, I got a few calls this weekend, just wanted to kind of just let everybody know what's going on. We had our town meeting on October 1st, and I explained it then, but I just want to kind of go over it again. A lot of people called wondering why Merced Police Department was in our city. But again, like I said, we are gonna, I've reached out to my counterparts and, because of the shooting violence we've been having, you'll probably be seeing them from time to time. I've asked Chief Cavalero, which he happily gave them to me to, for my use. His Gang Violence Suppressive Unit, they were out this weekend. A gun was taken off the street, so that's a good thing. So hopefully, they stop somebody from actually using that. So again, I want to thank Chief Cavalero, and we'll be seeing probably other police departments and other agencies from time to time, working with our units to try to curb what we've been, what we've been seeing in the community. Also for, I have, I had another few calls and on Facebook, why our officers were going door-to-door. And again, it was some of the things that I brought up and passed councils and on October 1st at the Town Hall meeting, was that our officer's going to be reaching out to our citizens, basically introducing themselves, giving them the business cards, and seeing what's going on within their, they're part of the neighborhood and the community. So if an officer does come to your house, it's not for anything bad. It's basically they want to seek your input because, again, you live here, so that's why they're there. And last but not least, I'm inviting everyone tomorrow for Coffee with the Cop at Starbucks. Come out and meet some of the officers. We will be on some of the dispatchers. We will be out at Starbucks tomorrow from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. So please, again, and I'll be out there as well. We want to hear your concerns, what's going on in the neighborhoods. Again, that's the only way we're going to actually get things accomplished. gonna actually, uh, get, get things accomplished by working together. So, um, do you have any questions?
Members of the public, any questions for police chief?
Is that even outside?
Yes.
And we'll be taking all the precautions, correct?
Yes. Masks, we have to be worn and socially distanced in your well.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, council member Batista, any questions for comments? Thank you. Uh, council member Kang, any questions, comments?
Yes, I got a question for the chief and, or the city manager. Um, do you guys know when you guys can update the police department website? Cause it still shows the older chief on there. So, any news about that?
Uh, council member Kang, our, our, um, the new website should, does not have any, any, uh, former employees' information on there?
Yeah.
So, what we have to make sure is to, uh, that, that the old website is, um, disengaged and taken down. I'm not sure if that, is that correct, uh, Vanessa? Okay, yeah. So, that, that should be, according to our finance director, that webpage should be dysfunction, not functioning, not old one.
I think, I'm sorry, I think it was, it was just the old picture on there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, it looks like the department is working on updating their photos. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Jose.
Uh, thank you.
Mayor Pocamara Sia, any questions, comments?
Negative.
Uh, for me, chief, uh, I really appreciate you reaching out to community, to the community and having your officers meet the public, uh, establish that relationship and that rapport with, and trust with everybody. Um, thank you for, uh, doing the Coffee with the Cop also. It's another opportunity for the public to engage. So, I appreciate it. Uh, appreciate you taking, uh, council's, uh, recommendations or comments into consideration. Uh, and then of course, it's always great to collaborate with other cities, other jurisdictions, and work together, uh, especially during these times that, uh, we have a nut-rising and the shooting. So, good job overall. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. What, what was that?
Uh, anything else?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Penny?
Very briefly, I just wanted to, uh, let you know that the, um, building industry is actively selling, um, homes. And so I'm getting a variety of new, um, homes, um, to be located on existing lots. So, the Manzanita subdivision is, um, selling two to four homes, uh, a month. And so they're, they're building, uh, that capacity. The, um, the bright development homes off of, um, let's see, anyway, they're, they're on the, um, eastern, yeah, the eastern edge of, of town. They are running out of lots. So, they'll be closing up relatively soon. So, uh, maybe within six to nine months. And so the, uh, new home sales market is very, um, healthy here in Livingston. And we are getting, um, interest for multifamily homes. Um, it takes a little bit longer to do that, but, uh, a very large multifamily project that is, uh, on the south part of the city, off of Main Street. Um, they're going through, um, their environmental documentation now. Um, we're also having an affordable housing project in the, um, um, around, uh, well, across the street from Livingston Community Health. Um, that one is also going through a process and, and their applications are, are coming in probably in the next, uh, four to six weeks. And so they'll wind their way through the planning commission and then come to the city council. And so those, um, housing developments, uh, we are still processing them. They're still, uh, going forward. And so those issues are, are still happening. Uh, we've got a couple of other, um, projects that are wending their way through as well. So, um, whether it's a COVID situation or not, the development industry is continuing to, uh, invest and, and build in Livingston. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, for finance department from the public? Okay, uh, council member Batista, any questions or comments? Council member Kang, any comments or questions?
Matthew, what's your name?
Mayor Pocamara Sia, any questions or comments? No, I'm good. Uh, just a quick question. Can you give us an update regarding the project, uh, where Domino's Pizza is gonna be? Is that going as planned?
Um, that is, um, they're going through the, the, the building permit process now. And so that, uh, is, is moving forward.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else to add?
Not for me.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, okay, uh, I'm gonna go back to our board supervisor, Rodrigo Sinoza. Anything to report, sir, Dave?
Yeah.
He's coming up.
Uh, good evening. Good evening, council. Um, we had a board supervisor's meeting, uh, this morning and we had a COVID update. And, uh, it was good to hear the numbers, of course, uh, you know, we all know it's going down, but, uh, we just, uh, we gotta be careful on, uh, you know, still, um, socializing too much and we're still, so, socializing out there. We're barely getting, going into the red, uh, and they're positive. Uh, but, uh, we have to be careful that, that, again, we are socialized too much, so much many parties. Um, one of the things that Becky, Mary Angela, the health director, just said that, uh, we, we as a community, we need to be testing a lot more. So that, uh, if you want to open up more businesses, more, uh, socializing, a lot of more, um, services that we used to have, we need to be testing a lot more. So, plenty of facilities, the pharmacies, there's plenty of testing. We done plenty of tests, uh, available, uh, the fairgrounds, pharmacies, at the clinics. Um, so, um, if, uh, you know, I did my test on the 25th here at the BFW Hall. On the 28th of September, uh, my test came back negative. Um, even with that, even with the test, you know, it's like they recommend that you test every, every 10 days. Uh, and so, we got too confident and, and I guess our numbers been going down. Like, we're not, we're not doing enough testing. That's a negative, uh, on the negative side. Uh, she stated that we were one of the top, uh, testing, uh, locations in, in the state. And now we're one of the last, probably second to the last. And so that will hurt us if we, uh, in, I guess, in, in our numbers. And, uh, we don't do more testing. So, I was planning on, there's not, no test today or, uh, I, I don't have a chance to, but maybe tomorrow, I'll be going to, uh, the fairground. So, uh, and now the new test, uh, you know, the one I did, it, it put a stick all the way up to my brain almost. And, uh, you know, which is a little painful, but, uh, now they're doing the, the easier one that's just going, probably a main change in half. And it's not as painful, so it's a lot more faster. So, the test you take only three, four days come back. Would you recommend that, uh, more people out there, just test, uh, try test more, you know, it became every two, ten days, every two weeks. So, just, um, passing it out to everyone here and out in the public, you know, to, to, I give more people to do the test. Um, also, I was able to, uh, volunteer last, uh, tha- last Thursday. Uh, they're gonna do a event this next Thursday. I'm hiring out food in, in Merced, at eight ninety-nine Park, Yosemite Parkway, at the United Methodist Church. They're gonna hire food for about fourteen hundred people. I guess a few days before, uh, they had, uh, council, and they hired food at the food bank in, uh, Alhale, in Merced. And so everybody came to, uh, their location on eight ninety-nine, uh, Yosemite Parkway. I really want food. Uh, and so this Thursday, again, I think, we're gonna have food. So, in case you know anybody, please come out, out that way. Uh, I noticed a lot, a lot of need on the community, a lot of people that, they're not working, you know, not working enough. You know, just, uh, just say, if you go, you know, just tell them that you want for one or two families. So, always, so we get up to, uh, one car's up to four or five, the families. So, uh, they, they don't mind that. And I know that, uh, they were having that food here in Livingston. So, I was talking to Mr. Moran about, just trying to see if we can, I'll be talking to the food bank, which will foster this, to see if we can get the food bank to deliver, um, some food here in Livingston. If we could try to do, uh, you know, a couple Saturdays a month, that'd be great. I think the first and the third, uh, Saturday. So, it's still a month, not in the books yet, but, uh, we'll be trying to do that. Uh, so at least for about three or four hundred people. So, it would just advertise a bunch of conferences. You know, I get that information. Um, I, and that, I think that, I follow that, cause you, there's gonna be any questions? You have to answer if I can.
Any questions, uh, from the public for our supervisor, Rodrigo Sinoza?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Identify yourself.
Yes, uh, Gabita Lazar. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I think our city council members did a great job with the, um, budget meetings that they had, the sessions where they had, I think, two or three budget sessions. So, thank you for your great leadership, city council and city manager. So, I'm, I'm curious, um, uh, Mr. Sinoza, if, if there could be more, um, community meetings for like the budget, I mean, the budget in the county is, is millions of dollars and a lot larger than Livingston. Um, what can you do or what can be done to have more, uh, budget sessions or workshops so that community, community members like those in Livingston can, uh, participate and provide more input into the process? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as, as I addressed to other, uh, community residents that wanted a, uh, you know, more workshops, um, I think, you know, the community needs to ask more because the, the draft, uh, budget comes out in, in June. And so from June to September, we approved the last meeting in September, as we did. I, I recommended that, uh, they, they ask supervisors at our meetings a lot more. It's okay with me that if the majority of supervisors don't want to have workshops, I'm only gonna vote. And that's what, uh, we get that every, every time. That if, uh, there's only one vote, then we won't have any more workshops. And obviously, uh, you know, you can do frustrations, you can call them out, but if, uh, you know, uh, that's why, you know, there's elections every two years. And if you don't like somebody that's not, uh, working for you, because we're the bosses, you know, the cities are our bosses. Uh, and if you don't listen to us, then the other option is, is voting somebody out, just like this, uh, election coming up in November. So, that's what I recommend, uh, that you, uh, come to the board meetings and, uh, send emails and, uh, ask them for more workshops. On any item that you like, or if you want something placed on the, on the, on the agenda. So, I don't know, probably after, but, you know, like, so, be the proponent, and they vote more, and that's the way it's gonna be.
Any other questions? Um, council member Batista, any questions for comments or supervisor? Council member Kang, any questions?
Nope.
Mayor Pocamara Sia, any questions?
Uh, negative.
I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
One, one more comment, I can't. Uh, I remember, we were talking about the budget. We did approve a hundred thousand dollars for another, uh, purchase another, uh, food, food truck, delivery truck, for, um, to deliver more food around the county. So, that, that 'll help. That was on the budget for this year. So, again, that's why we want to make sure that throughout our county, that we're able to, through the food bank, deliver more food around, I can. So, just information. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, let's move along for our city manager.
Yes, council member Aguilera. I do have a few things. Uh, just to dovetail a little bit in terms of what the supervisor was talking about. Uh, so we, we were alerted today that we went from purple phase to the red phase, which that translates to is that our restaurants can now have indoor dining. The indoor dining, however, is limited to 25% capacity or a hundred, uh, whatever's fewer in terms of people. So, 25% capacity. And, uh, hopefully the county would petition the, the governor to open to 50%. Um, so, well, that's my hope and, and my request, actually, if, if, if all possible. Um, then, the other item I wanted to dovetail on, off of Jackie, and that is with UC Merced. As she, as she alluded to, we're working with UC Merced on the hundred year anniversary. But, we, uh, are also looking at finding other ways to collaborate with the institution. I have, uh, I'm, I'm setting up a meeting with our new chancellor. We have a new chancellor, at UC Merced, Chancellor Munoz. And so, looking forward to meeting him in person. And again, trying to find how we can, you know, collaborate, everything from economic development to, um, you know, preserving our history, to, uh, looking at, uh, participating in some major regional, uh, planning, et cetera. So, um, uh, we're gonna continue to outreach to them. Uh, the other item I have is, um, we're working also, uh, with the foundation and, and the foundation is going to be helping different businesses here in town on small business development activities. So, uh, I'll give you some examples. Let's say that there is, uh, we have a small business here and they're looking at negotiating the lease with their landlord. They have no idea about their, um, actual lease itself or the contract that they're getting into. For free, they'll be able to look at these leases and give some good feedback. Uh, or let's say that they're, they don't know how to really do social media and how to get their products and, and what their service is out there. They'll be able to help at no cost. Uh, they will also help you with business planning, business plans. They'll help you with, um, uh, you know, where to source materials, you name it. Uh, so, again, if, if there's a small business out there, medium-sized business who need some assistance, contact City Hall. We'll make sure that they, uh, make contact with you. Uh, the other item I have is, the Ace Train, as you know, we all here have been working really hard to try to convince, uh, the powers that be, and our supervisor's actually one of the, uh, uh, board members, that Livingston is the place that they should land the, the train stop, that, uh, we have a platform here. And, and you all know all the different things that we've done over the course of the last few years to position ourselves strategically to actually land it. Well, the decision, uh, if I'm correct, is gonna be sometime, uh, towards the end of the year, first of part of next year. So, uh, what I would ask our council is to, uh, reach out to, uh, the other board members that make up the board that the supervisor, our supervisor is, is part of. And again, make the case for why Livingston is the right place. And, um, again, you guys all know all the things that we've done, but I'll be more than happy to provide that information to you. And, um, and cross our fingers that we landed. So, that's all I have unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for our city manager from the public?
Hi, dude.
Is this Gabor?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you, uh, council member Aguilera. Um, yeah, it's, uh, Jose, uh, with the, with the meetings with UC Merced, um, is that gonna be open to the public? Or when do you plan to meet? Um, cause I think, um, being a community member, there may be some of us who are interested in, in participating or maybe providing some sort of input, meaning that, um, um, we are from Livingston as well. Um, and then number two, um, the question regarding the foundation and small businesses, um, is that a nonprofit? How's that work? How's that gonna, um, work out? Meaning in terms of, is there room for people from the community to participate and be involved and help out with something like that? Uh, because I agree with you, there's many, um, small businesses in Livingston that do need some help. And sometimes their, uh, their business systems in terms of, uh, how payment is made, or how they track their data, do their sales, um, may be a bit outdated. So, is there other opportunities for people to, residents from Livingston, community members to participate and help out, um, with that? So, that kind, those are my two questions. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you very much for your questions. So, the answer is yes, yes, and yes. So, uh, it is a nonprofit. Uh, it, they're all open to the public. So, as long as you're, you know, part of Livingston, um, or not, I mean, technically, if you are concerned about, uh, you know, Livingston and want to help Livingston, we can certainly facilitate, um, uh, interaction with, uh, either uh, interaction with uh, either of the two entities, so, so thank you for asking. And so I'll make sure to provide you with some information, so that you are um, aware of the different services, and when we're gonna have meetings with um, UC Merced.
Thanks, Jose.
Thank you, Gabriel. Uh, anybody else from the public? Okay, uh, Councilmember Batista, any questions, comments?
I just have a, uh, just quickly, um, in regards to census twenty twenty, I know that uh, the deadline has passed for, for stop reporting, but have you had any contact with uh, Patricia Ramos, or anybody else that was on board assisting Livingston with uh, uh, complete count?
Uh, I, I haven't had a, I haven't had any contact with Patricia Ramos in the last couple of weeks. However, we've been, we've been working with the Latino Community Foundation and some others, to again, look at pushing out this information and making sure that people understand the importance of being voted, of, of, uh, I mean, of, of being counted. I also participated uh, with um, some media outlets to inform the public, again, on the importance of why um, being counted is such vital for our community. Also, Councilmember Mayagular, about our lower, our low numbers, and that's kind of, that's kind of been the, the issue for a lot of communities. And my hope is that they um, extend the deadline, because we certainly do need it.
Hi, just to chime in, the uh, deadline for the census has been extended until October thirty first. I don't know if everyone's aware. Um, there, there was a recent court ruling last week, and uh, yeah, you can self, fill it out until the thirty first. And if anybody needs uh, assistance, Jakarta Movement is having our um, hotline open, and we will help people fill out the census. And uh, if you guys need the number, just reach out to me. Jose, you have a deep's number, we'll uh, shoot out the hotline to you, and anybody that needs help, they can call it, and we'll help them out.
Outstanding, so it's been, so it has been extended, yeah, until the October thirty first. Thank you very much for bringing that up, so I will certainly reach out to you guys, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for providing that information. Um, Councilmember Kang, any, any questions, comments?
Yes, I got a question for Jose, or I'm supervisor. So is that correct, that twenty-five percent of the restaurants could have indoor seating?
Uh, yes, so we're in the red phase, so that means that restaurants are, dine-in can open up to twenty-five percent capacity. And I made a request to the supervisor that he can convey it to his other colleagues, uh, and the health department, to petition the state to allow for fifty percent capacity, because to be honest with you, twenty-five percent really doesn't, even though it's, it's something, it doesn't mean um, I think that uh, a petition in that fifty percent could help out.
Thank you, Jose.
Mayor Protim, any questions, comments?
Yes, uh, just for Jose, city manager, sir. Uh, well, we're at, we're at a red, or we went into red, so does, does that mean City Hall is gonna be open eight to five now, or uh, can I get that answered first, before I move on?
Uh, ye- yes, uh, uh, Mayor Protim, yes, so we opened up City Hall, and it's open eight to five, and uh, until further notice, if things uh, turn around, that where it's uh, you know, the, the number of cases start to spike, and different situations, so we'll be continuously monitoring. So, as of today, uh, Monday, uh, it's, it was open from eight to five.
Okay, thank you for that. And the next question is, um, I know you had modified certain individuals there uh, for their work schedule. Does that mean everyone's gonna be reporting back to work as normal?
Uh, uh, no, Mayor Protim, uh, we are continuing, we, so everybody is working, except that there's, there, there's modifications. Um, so the modifications are, one week, um, like for instance, I'll use City Hall, uh, one group rotates in, one group rotates out, but they're working, they, they're working remotely from home, or they're here in the office. Uh, so that'll continue. Um, and as soon as, um, you know, we get to, cause right now, even though we're in red, it, it's still uh, categorized as, you know, a higher risk, so we're keeping it the same. But as, as we start to look better and better, then we can make other modifications.
Okay, well, I mean, on that part, I just don't understand why, I mean, we have other individuals that work for the city, and I mean, I'm not sure if they were offered the same as certain individuals there at your office. Um, so I think we probably need to look at that again, but that's your call, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, thank, thank, thank you for, for bringing that up, Mayor Protim. And let me just, let me just say that different employees, um, for instance, you have essential employees, of course, we're gonna say that everybody's essential, but I think you understand what I'm talking about. But, um, so at the end of the day, we are, I'm trying to balance, um, you know, the needs of the community with the needs of our employees, and, and uh, and then also what's happening uh, around us as it relates to COVID. So, I'm more than happy to talk to you further about this.
Okay, and then, um, I mean, do those individuals have direct contact with the public, or, I mean, do they all each have their own office, or?
Uh, our employees, uh, so, so for instance, are you talking about the essential employees, like police and public works, and those individuals who?
No, negative, that's negative, not, not those, the ones in your office, so.
Uh, yes, yeah, so for instance, eh, right now, we limit the amount of people that we see, eh, uh, you know, behind the desk, uh, and, and, and meeting with people in the conference room. So, what we do is, we basically make appointments, or we look at different uh, circumstances to meet with those individuals, so we're trying to meet their needs. So, when you start having a lot of people coming in and out uh, of uh, City Hall, that increases the exposure rate. And um, we would like to have, like the supervisor was talking about, you know, more testing in our community, so that way, because, keep in mind that you, you expose one, and even if, like, if I had everybody working, you get one exposure, you're pretty much going to, uh, because one person is infected, you have all these other individuals that have to be quarantined for fourteen days. And so, that's the maneuvering that I'm having, the challenges that I'm having. So that's why I'm rotating people in and out, but I opened up City Hall from eight to five.
Okay, so, I mean, have, I mean, I'm pretty sure you've thought about it, I mean, thought about this, and I mean, other communities doing this, and I mean, other agencies also, doing um, video chat live, or, you know, Zoom, or Blue, BlueJeans, I mean, we probably need to look at that also.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Protim. Yeah, we, we actually do that continuously, so we've purchased um, you know, cameras for the com, for the different computers, and so a lot of my staff is now doing Zoom meetings, or WebEx, or uh, using the different platforms, BlueJeans. Uh, yes, that's a very good tool.
Okay, well, uh, like I said, I, I mean, I hope you would uh, look at this again now that we're at a, we're in red. I mean, just to be equally fair in the, in, you know, for other members uh, that work for the city, and not, not only them, but for the general public, so um, that, I'll close it with that. Thank you, sir, for the uh, answering this question.
No, thank you. And, and for the public, um, uh, there's, there's two individuals um, who, who uh, actually have worked continuously through the whole uh, COVID since, since it started, and those two individuals is myself and the, our clerk, city clerk. So if you need to access us, or need to have information provided, uh, you guys are more than welcome to contact us. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for me, I just have a few questions, comments, um, and we'd like to, I wanted to ask, and we'd like to, the whole COVID situation, obviously, uh, there's funds being available to city-state, um, just wanna see if you could, you could uh, go with an update in regards to how uh, the city is uh, you know, seeking those funds, and make sure that we get our piece of the pie, and we'd like to go front.
Yeah, um, Councilmember Aguilera, absolutely. So, we're in constant contact with our member agencies, including the League, and so there's been uh, quite a few uh, CARES Act uh, funding, and so we've applied for those funding, and we've actually gotten reimbursed for the first wave, which I believe was about, uh, I don't wanna misquote that, but I think it was about sixty-three thousand dollars, if I'm not correct? Yeah, sixty-three thousand dollars. And then the second wave, I'm not familiar exactly that dollar amount, but Vanessa can certainly uh, share. But yeah, we, we are looking at that, and as a matter of fact, we have one item on tonight's agenda, which is the improvement to uh, um, you know, the audio and visual here, who, where we're hoping to take advantage of that funding to pay for this, so Vanessa?
Yes, um, adding on to that reimbursement, the program, the CARES Act program is funding, that it's actually being advanced to us, and as we use it, we can recognize this advancement, so um, the nice thing about this funding is that they're, they're going to give it to us in six different uh, chunks of uh, time periods. So we have received two, we have four more coming, and um, and, and that puts us in a really nice situation of having money on hand to move forward with either um, an improvement project, or um, or, or do some sort of like uh, feeling back on the extra expenses that we are incurring, based on having to disinfect more um, the offices and the, and all of our um, facilities in the city. And um, other than that, I mean, it, it's, it's just a re, the mechanism, it's, it's, it's on our favor, the fact that it's the money, it's advanced, and it's not like other programs that we have to um, put the money out, half the expense, and wait three months out to claim and receive money, so.
Thank you. Um, I've got another question real quick. Uh, with regards to the A train advocacy, uh, for us as a council, is uh, if you could please go ahead and just forward the information of the board members, so that we could, um, you know, reach out, um. Uh, I know that we have talked about it in the past, um, I don't know if we could even put a, some kind of letters together, uh, with their, you know, the whole council's signature, and uh, advocating for that, maybe, I don't know, I don't think we've done that before, um, so maybe that's a possibility.
Yeah, well, I, I think where you guys can really have a, a big impact is, like, for instance, I know that uh, Vito Cieza is the uh, board chairman, is that correct, uh, supervisor? So, you know, make in contact with him. What I'll do is, I'll provide you with the board members, and their contact information, and then you guys can certainly, you know, do a Zoom meeting with them, or, or um, uh, meet with them, or talk to them on the phone, and um, and, and just, you know, and I'll just share all the different points, uh, you know, why we should be selected, and then we'll go from there.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, and with the meeting with the chancellor, I think that's a great uh, opportunity, if um, if I'm able to join you, that'd be great, just let me know, and uh, I'll go with you. Um, I think it's great to partner up with uh, local um, educational institutions, such as UC Merced and State as well. Um, another question, um, I know there's, like Randy mentioned, there's some development going on, uh, some projects going on, uh, we just wanna assure and advocate to make sure we have a, some development agreements in place, uh, making sure that we're uh, looking at the impacts that those projects are, are making, um, so we could um, you know, target that as possible, please. Um, and then in regards to City Hall being open, I'm glad it's open, I know we received a lot of uh, comments from the public, or at least I have, and uh, wanting uh, more access to City Hall, uh, just, you know, paying the bills and stuff like that. Uh, so I'm glad it's open eight to five. I understand that, you know, it's a tricky situation in regards to um, not having staff um, placed in, at risk, um, but uh, definitely, um, you know, obviously you'll look into that, because, you know, obviously you wanna provide good customer service. I know that uh, ballots will be turned in at City Hall, and we need to have staff in there, uh, appropriate staffing levels. Uh, so obviously, I know that you will look into that. Uh, and that is for, that's it for me, thank you, Jose. And our mayor is not currently present, or um, I don't think he's joined the call, is that correct? Okay, we'll move along to citizen comments.
Can I add something to that?
Yes.
Yeah, regarding the, the City Hall opening Monday to Friday, I think that's a great thing, but uh, I honestly think we need to, like Vice Mayor said, that we need to be fair for all the employees. I think every employee is a central employee. Everybody has a family, even in the City Hall, we have employees that have their offices, or six feet apart. Uh, I don't think it's fair for other employees that work for public work, work for the police department, that they have to come to work, knock on doors, or check waters, when you have city employees that are, are behind doors, behind fully approved glass. I don't think it's fair. So I, if I could make a motion, or all council will decide, as a joint, that everybody should come to work Monday to Friday, doesn't matter where they're at, if they're sick, then we'll deal with it afterwards, but as of right now, we can't decide like, hey, somebody's family is more important than others, so I think everybody needs to come to work. I don't know if you get this correctly?
Trevor, you're on the line?
This is the city attorney, um, I just wanna, to caution, um, because this is a city manager, council, former government, um, you know, the city manager is responsible for the employment um, of the city employees, as well as direction and discipline, so um, in regards to the motion, um, you know, maybe, uh, I, I would caution against making a, a command, and make it more of a, um,
A request?
A general statement, or a request for the city manager to consider.
Okay, uh, I would like the city managers to have, if you could, if it works out, have every employee work there, cause just to be fair with other employees. In my opinion, I don't think it looks good, you're giving one employee a chance to go home, be with the family, when other employees have to be there. Me personally, I don't think that's fair, but that's again, it's your decision. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, before I move on, uh, we're moving on to city council, uh, announcements and reports. Uh, Councilmember Batista? Nothing, sorry. Councilmember Kang? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry, Kang. Uh, Councilmember Batista has something to report, hold on.
Just a couple of things. Uh, this is where I put on my uh, VFW auxiliary hat. Um, I do have another military banner, and I, I get really super proud of these, because they go downtown. This is our newest. Um, so again, I'll give it to you, Anthony, to uh, find a home for it, cause I know that we are now coming down to the main street, and that gets me super excited, because now they're more visible, and thank you for um, trimming back the tree, so that the other banners behind it uh, could be seen. Uh, so as we come down the main street, I, I, I'm really proud that they are displayed, along with our American flags and our military uh, flags as well. Uh, we do have a serviceman that is gonna be recognized for being promoted. Uh, he is, uh, he was stationed up in Alaska, but he is a graduate of Livingston High School, and that is one of the criteria that I wanna explain to the community. I know I've mentioned it before, but in order to have a banner, a military banner downtown, is that it has to be a graduate from Livingston High School, and currently serving. So these are currently serving members. What'll happen, upon their discharge, the VFW will present them with a banner and a cer- ceremony at the VFW hall. So if there's any interest, again, you can contact any uh, VFW member or myself. So I have that. Um, we are growing big at the VFW, because we have acquired many members from the Atwater Post, and I'm really happy about that, so we're gonna be more visible out into the community, and, and promoting Americanism, and, you know, a, a lot more patriotism through, throughout our city. Um, and with that, I, I, as, as a member of the auxiliary, and um, wanting to promote patriotism, there was a video on Facebook uh, the other day, where there's a, there's an American flag that's waving between Byerwood and B Street, and the video was shot during the nighttime. So, as part of my duty, is to educate the public, um, per the US flag code, is that if you're not going to per the US flag code, is that if you're not going to lower your flag at dusk, then you need to go out and remove it. So, if we're not able to raise our flag from dusk to dawn, a light needs to be illuminated on it. So, again, that's out to the public. Just for general knowledge, because when there are questions that are asked about the flags downtown, I'd like to do what I can to rectify any situations that we come into because, again, that is the respect that we have for the American flag. So, so rather than just educate and let you know, I did place a solar light out there on the, on the flag that's being flown on Briarwood and B Street. So, that, again, that is part of my duty as a VFW auxiliary member is to show respect for our American flag. Another part on the VFW, we are also, and I am glad that Supervisor Sinoz is here, we have collaborated with UC Merced's Erin Meyer. She also runs food pantry down on Eighteenth Street to bring a project to Livingston soon, within this month, which is called The People's Bridge. The People's Bridge has fresh produce in it. And it's available, like it says, The People's Bridge. It's open to the community. It's available for donation as well as pickup for those that are in need. One of the biggest ideas that I have behind that, because I do serve as a chair for the community outreach, and again, we're collaborating with UC Merced, and I also want to send an invitation out to other clubs, which is yours, and other urban issues that have food pantries, are deliver food boxes, that any access that you have, if we can also incorporate that with the refrigerator. The refrigerator will be available daily from nine to five. So, as that sounds, as we get more information and are able to get the volunteers that we need, it'll be available to the community for donation through service clubs. Or, this is the bigger idea, is that I want to ensure that, that when we run out of the food pantries, when those are going low, that our community also knows that they can also have a community garden. So, that would be another aspect of the whole idea is to educate our citizens on using a community garden and growing a community garden so that we can help them to be self-sufficient and learn how to grow fruits and vegetables in their own backyards, front yards, and utilize their yards that way. So, again, that'll be coming up and within this month. Also, I received an email. I worked with Jackie Sullivan. She was the, she was a council member from, I believe, Bakersfield. She is the one that helped us to bring In God Retrust. And many of our council members got the email as well, but I wanted to go ahead and share it with you. And then she congratulated the city of Livingston in Merced County for displaying the national motto, In God Retrust, that we have right here in our council chambers. And what she's saying to us, or what she's recommending for us is to approach with our Merced County other cities, council members, that we do have two cities remaining, that we should ask and encourage to vote yes on also displaying our national motto. And that would be Los Banes and Merced. And once that's done, all of Merced County will have the national motto displayed within their council chambers. So, again, if you want to go ahead and, if you want to share board supervisor contacts, share Merced and Los Banes with us so that we could all do a little bit of outreach and get some more cohesiveness throughout our county, that would be great. And within, we'd be considered a victory county with 100%.
Thank you, Councilwoman Batista. Councilmember King?
Yes, I want to, I got a quick question for Vanessa, if I may ask. I have a lot of complaints about citizens complaining about the city hall on Fridays leaving at 3:30. Does that mean the employees are only punching in six and a half hours or they're getting paid for eight hours?
This is the city manager speaking, Councilmember King. So, on Fridays, because of the disinfection process that we use, we release city hall employees at 3:30. So, they, that's not on their, on their, how can I say it? It's, it's not, it's not because of them that they're having to clock out. So, they're basically compensated for the eight hours.
Well, isn't it, couldn't we just spray after five o'clock and just pay one employee overtime? Or is the, because I'm curious, why we're letting seven or eight employees get off hour and a half early when we could just have one employee pay him 30 minutes overtime, spray after five o'clock? I had employees, I mean, citizens actually sending me videos of knocking on the door at three o'clock, I mean, around 3:30, four, nobody's there. That's the reason I was asking the question. Is there any way, my request to you is to have it sprayed after five o'clock so that every resident have enough time? Because right now, everybody's online schooling. Nobody's, I have kids on my own. We don't get off, off the computer until 2:00 PM. Is there any way, my request to you is to leave it open until five? So, every citizen has the enough time to get to the city hall? They got to pay any bills or anything like that?
Uh, ye- yes, now that, yes, yeah, now that, now that we're open from eight to five, because before, we used to close at 12 noon, again, because of COVID situation. Now that things have improved, we're going to revisit all of that. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Councilmember King.
Thank you, Jose.
Anything else, Councilmember King?
No, that's it. Thank you, Juan.
Okay. Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes, first of all, I just want to thank Maria for her hard work, dedication, shell support for our veterans, me being one of them. That's awesome. And I really, really appreciate it. And I'm pretty sure a lot of veterans in active military also do. So, thank you. Another question, well, the question is for the city manager. So, are we still going along with the two soccer fields at Max Foster Complex? Is that still coming in the future? Or what are we doing with that?
So, that, that's still a project that we would like to see come to fruition. As you know, budgetarily wise, you know, we're, we're limited in our funds. However, we're looking at carryover, carryover in any funds that we have. And our goal, and we're actively searching for some grants as well, we're looking at the stewardship foundation to see if we can get some funding there. And we're looking at other grants. So, that, because at the end of the day, it still comes out to be, if I'm not mistaken, Anthony, we, you said it was going to be something close to about $100,000, is that correct? Eighty to 100,000, yeah. So, it is something that we really definitely want to do. And that is with doing some of the work ourselves. So, it's still a big ticket item. And again, we're actively looking at trying to accomplish that, hopefully by fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, sir. And another thing, how do we go about naming one of these soccer fields? Well, obviously, it has to go through the council and whatnot, go through these steps. But, I mean, how awesome would it be to name one of the soccer fields veterans, soccer field or, you know, veterans field? And I don't know how long the grant takes or, you know, the process. But, for next year, for Veterans Day, that would be awesome, you know, have a ceremony there for Veterans Day, you know. So, how do we go about that?
The process that you guys have used in the past has just been a council member, you know, bringing it up, putting it in as an agenda item on our council agenda, getting feedback from the council and the public. And then it gets elevated from there. And then you got to take a formal process in terms of naming. So, as it relates to the, the actual field itself, again, if we, if we garner sufficient funding, you know, certainly by the time next fiscal year comes around, we should be able to, you know, have it in place. But, again, it all depends on funding. But, that's the process for naming, if you wanted to start that process now.
Yes, I mean, I would like to start the process. I'm, I'm not sure about the other council members, how they feel about it. But, okay, so we'll start the process here soon. And another thing, I know you said that city employees there get compensated for leaving at three o'clock?
Uh, yes, whenever, whenever, whenever there's a situation, in this case, you know, when we have to disinfect, and again, you got to remember that city hall closed up to the public by noon, okay? And so, we released employees and typically, there is, let's see, about seven employees by 3:30 so that way they can come in and sanitize, you know, the entire building. And so, for that, that hour and a half that we released them, ahead of time, we compensate in front. We pay, that was basically paid. So, they were released early.
So, do they come in early that day?
Uh, no, they don't come in early.
Okay, so, so I don't think, I mean, I don't think that's fair that we're struggling as a city with finance-wise, you know? I mean, officers paying off other employees. We can't hire people. But, you're compensating city employees there to leave at 3:30. How's, and they're putting down for eight when they're actually working six and a half hours. So, I mean, I'm requesting that, since this started and you, and they've been punching out early, me and myself, I'm requesting to have those documents provided to us at the council, or to me at least. So, we can go over that because, like I said, I mean, you're basically, I'm not saying anyone's lying. However, I mean, if you're putting eight hours and you work six and a half hours, I mean, that's an issue.
Let me, let me just share a little, thank you, Mayor Protem. Let me just say this. That, that is an administrative decision. I'm the one who made that decision. And I take full responsibility. So, if you want to do something in that regard, you can certainly address it directly with me. At this point, there's, there hasn't been, nothing has been done that is inappropriate. You might think it's unfair. And again, I'll take that responsibility. But, my employees are doing what they're being asked. And, and to me, the, the health and welfare of the employees are utmost important. And I know you keep on bringing the police department up. If you look across the city, you know, the different management looks at their employees and what they do. And based on that, they make decisions. So, we have to look at both sides of the, of the, of the spectrum, not just one side.
No, I, I understand. I, I've only brought up the police department once today there, sir. So, that was just an example, one example. So, like I said,
Um, the attorney can certainly chime in if he wants to in terms of supplying. I mean, we, nothing is being hidden. Everything is there. And I'm making, I'm letting you know right now that the, the, nothing has been done unappropriately as an employee. They, they were signed off and I approved. And so, again, it was based on the disinfection of the city and all the dynamics. And so, you know, and, and I have no problem in sitting down with you and going over everything with you if you want.
Trevor, you want to comment on this?
I, I was really clear on, I'm having to answer any questions. Obviously, the council's entitled to, you know, request documentation from the city manager's office. And also, always keeping in mind that, again, city manager is responsible for the management, supervision of the city's employees.
Thank you, Trevor. Mayor Protem, you still there? Mayor Protem? I believe we lost them. We'll move along to my report. The only question I have, since I have the police department and the fire department here, I mentioned before, trying to organize safety fair like previous years. However, due to COVID, obviously, traditionally, we have different vendors come out and different services. This year, I was trying to do a drive-through kind of thing. So, I was going to ask Captain Elvis if perhaps, if you guys were available to start this safety fair planning or conduct it on October 24th, the Saturday? I don't know if I lost Captain Elvis?
No, I'm here, sir. I did try to unmute it. Um, sorry. That's something we could talk about. What were your plans due to COVID, try and keep separation and stuff for the safety fair?
So, our plan was to do a kind of a drive-through kind of thing. So, maybe have the different departments, maybe perhaps on C Street, people drive through there and we hand out, for example, face coverings, hopefully some hand sanitizer, educational brochures and information regarding, you know, COVID or the fires or emergency evacuation. Anything, anything related to safety. So, you know, obviously, we could talk a lot more. But, I just wanted, since you're on the line, I wanted to give you a heads up of possibly October 24th would work.
No, for sure. We could, we could talk in person and make a plan. And then I could try to get some materials together and see what we can get. And so, that we could hand out such as like face masks or cleaning supplies.
Perfect, thank you. And then I'll also ask the police chief, who's currently not here presently, but I'll ask him. And then we could make this happen. And then we could advertise it and let the public know. Police chief, this here now. Chief, would a Saturday, October 24th possibly work for your department for a drive-through safety fair? If you could look up in your calendar when you get a chance and possibly work together with me and the fire department? Perfect. Thank you, chief. And that's pretty much it for me, just in general. I wanted to just, happy that we're not in the red, so in the face of the situation. And hopefully, Board of Supervisors will advocate for us to continue on to 50% capacity in restaurants. I'm also glad the city hall is opening up eight to five. And I know that there were some questions brought up, you know, so the city manager alerts to making sure that, you know, we're providing the best service available to our public with safety precautions in place. Considering just that the election's coming up and ballots will be turned in city hall and that we have received some complaints about the disability. So, let's move on. Anything else, council members? Time on the safety fair, I think it'll be better to do it early in the morning. But, we'll have discussions in regards to availability for the fire department and the police department for a concrete time. So, we'll announce it. Okay, let's move on to citizen comments. Section of the agenda, laws numbers to the public, does the city council on any items not otherwise on the agenda, members of the public when recognized as a mayor? In this situation, city councilman Mary Gare should come forward, relax, and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting law. No action will be taken by the city council in this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to discuss the city council as each item is up for discussion. Do we have any members of the public wanting to comment?
Yes. Jason Ross, 1629, First Court. From Councilwoman Maria Batista's comment about that flag, that flag hits the ground. I will personally, I would like to personally replace that flag. Hitting the ground is disrespectful to the country. So, I will personally replace that tomorrow. Secondly, I'd like to ask about Arco situation. Are they coming in to the city? And that's it.
Mr. Ross, thank you very much for your question. So, so Arco, the original owners, the ones who went through the entitlement process, they are actively selling their property or the project itself. And we've received some inquiries from some other folks out of the Fresno area that are looking at possibly acquiring the property and of course, the entitlement rights. At this point, it's still ongoing. So, again, the original owners are selling the project. And we have others that are looking at purchasing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Any other members of the public, yeah, they have a telephone? Go ahead.
Mr. Ross? Uh, just wanted to make a comment. Um, I, I appreciate that, I, while I was out there, um, putting out the solar light, I did examine the flag and per US flag code, it's, it's not damaged, um, or, or defaced in any way, or, or dirty. Um, but again, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and again, it's, and, and it's, it's what you want to do is honor the flag that way, because it is out of respect, let the flag not go beneath, it must not hit anything that goes beneath it, and that does include the ground. Um, but I do know that for flag code, we don't have to burn the flag anymore, um, if, if it does touch the ground. But care for our flag is the utmost important, so thank you for much, thank you so much for, um, volunteering to, to do such a thing. Um, and again, I appreciate what you, what, uh, what you are recommending and letting our public know. And again, the education part about, uh, our flag is that it does not hit anything beneath it. So, thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Donna Duffy.
Go ahead.
Donna Duffy, sixteen sixteen Sapphire Drive, first of all, speaking as a citizen, I want to, um, let the council know that I am applying for a permit to use the Memorial Park for a candidate's forum. A number of community members have approached me, uh, regarding a, a way to be able to meet their, or hear from their client candidates, not really meet, because we're going to do COVID distancing. That application will be put in, um, and we're looking to do that on Memorial Park on Saturday. Um, there is no agency, organization, or any, um, anything behind that. It, it's just a group of citizens who thought it would be great to make it happen. And then, I'm gonna put my Livingston Lions hat on, and I want to let the council and, and, uh, members of the community know that Livingston Lions is having a book collection drive. Uh, you can drop books off at City Hall when it's open and the, uh, Police Department lobby when it's open, you know, there's a box there. Um, if we get enough books, we'll fill the police station little libraries, but Livingston Lions does take care of five little libraries that are well-used, uh, within the city. Also, thank you for the Court of Trees, and, um, anyone who's interested in participating on the committee for the Court of Trees is invited to send an email to LivingstonLions@gmail, so it's LivingstonLionsplural@gmail.com. Let me know you're interested, and we'll be having a committee meeting shortly. We'll do all our meetings originally on Zoom, and, um, I'll make sure you get invited to those. The last thing is, um, Livingston Lions, along with the VFW, will be starting work on the welcome sign at, um, Bee and Winston Parkway. Uh, we're refurbishing that to make it nice and new, um, and the, working in conjunction with the VFW to, to do some design changes there. That work will take place in October over time, so there will be a period of time when it will be just in disrepair. And it, um, uh, we'll get it done, uh, and, um, I'm sure council member, um, Baptista will get back to the city council as to what, uh, we're going to do for Veterans Day as we rededicate, uh, the newly refurbished area.
That's all. Thank, thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to make a quick comment to Donna.
What's up? Sorry, go ahead, um, Captain Rodriguez.
So, quick comment to, um, Donna Duffy, or, and to the public, in regards to November eleventh. The veterans, we always do our Veterans Day parade, and this year, without exception, we will be gathering, the VFW part of the parade will be gathering behind the historical museum. Um, step off is promptly at eleven AM. We march through town, up through the park, um, and then we kind of just man there. Um, we have a little twist on it this year, uh, something that, uh, we're going to add. Prior to the parade, we like people, it's gonna incorporate, um, a classic car show. So, we will, they will gather there at the historical museum, but anybody that wants to gather, as we do, they open it and, and we plan, uh, together for the, uh, ceremony that we'd have down there on B Street and Winston Parkway. At what time the dedication would be, we would also, the, the VFW will be present there as well. So, that ceremony would take place prior to the parade, because the parade starts promptly at eleven. We go down main, up to park, they just stand, and then we would meet at the VFW hall for, uh, homemade soup, which is the very best end bread. So, they do have a ceremony afterwards. I haven't collaborated yet, uh, to find out what, um, the staff will be doing. Um, I haven't heard as of yet, uh, so I'll reach out to them, they usually hold a Veterans Day parade, but I do know for sure that the Livingston veterans will be conducting their parade, uh, eleven o'clock complete, um, soon after the dedication that is done down on B Street. And what the veterans part is doing for the, uh, refurbishment of the welcome sign, that, well, what every, uh, service club will be doing is displaying their logo again to make them nice and, uh, displayable. But the veterans will also have five branches of the military as, uh, their flag banners, and, and those are the ones that, uh, that are staked into the ground, and they're about fifteen foot tall, and, I mean, they'll just, they're not typical, they're not the flags with the flag pole, but there'll be five branches of the military, plus a flag pole that will display our, um, American flag and a POW. So, that is the part that, uh, the VFW will be providing for the gateway into Livingston. So, thank you, Donna.
Yeah, one of, um, Rodriguez, one of the things that I forgot during my comments was, uh, I guess the, the best news, uh, the positive news was, um, uh, on the county budget and, uh, oh, I thought it was somebody else talking. Um, uh, the best news was that we're talking about VFW is that when we approved the budget, we also approved three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Livingston VFW hall. We approved three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Livingston VFW, to remind us. Couple of years ago, we, uh, you know, uh, do learn analysis because Muster was wanting more money for, uh, VFW hall in Muster. So, I pushed to have Muster, and I pushed to have others, but, you know, uh, other cities, uh, around County, they would give VFW funds, except Livingston, so I was not happy. And, uh, since then, I've been pushing for, for Livingston, and, uh, so I got this great news this year that it would be, uh, three hundred and twenty-five, three, three twenty-five would be allocated to, for, uh, VFW here in Livingston, so that was great news. On the twenty-third, I got my, um, my COVID test here at the VFW hall, uh, and Mr. Wells was out there, I told him, so, he's currently working with, uh, Dana, Dana Hurt, fellow, fellow director. Uh, when I talked to Dana, he showed me a list of, uh, uh, you know, uh, stuff that's gonna be fixed for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. But, uh, the allocation is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we want to make sure that we, we get, uh, reuse the fellow funds if we can, uh, for our building here in Livingston, because it's been, uh, for a long time, uh, been, uh, you know, uh, uh, to run. And, uh, I think that, uh, is very well-used by some of, uh, committees here in, in Livingston, and, uh, you know, of, of course, uh, a VFW, uh, veteran, a veteran's, uh, always in need of, uh, a good location to meet, so I think that's gonna help out, and, uh, it's always been approved. So, we just have to, it's, it's a better to, to meet with, uh, Mr. Wells and talk about, you know, uh, regards to what, what's gonna need it and what's already, um, in the works and that, that the building needs, and, uh, choose your own, and so on, that's the, I'll figure out. So, and I have to remember that, so, thank you. And, uh, if there's any questions, uh, I'll, I'll give that list, or you can look when, uh, I'll be glad to go out there with, uh, whenever you guys have veterans meet, and see what the structural modifications is gonna look like, uh, again, I'll give that list, thank you.
Thank you, Supersol Rodriguez. Uh, anybody else on the phone, on the public that wish to comment?
Yes, Catherine.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Catherine Shell Rodriguez, Livingston, California. I have a couple of questions for the city attorney, although the city mi- manager might want to chime in, but I'm going to direct them at the city attorney first. My first question is, has to do with making motions during a city council meeting. Uh, aren't those supposed to be limited to items that are already agendized on the agenda? And that, uh, a council is not supposed to be voting on items that are not yet already on the agenda? Well, that's question number one. Question number two is, um, some of us are probably already aware that Foster Farms was sued by an animal rights activist group over the amount of water that they use. And I was wondering if these, if there has been any thought of the city of Livingston doing an amicus brief on behalf of Foster Farms in this litigation?
Trevor, you want to go ahead and answer that?
Sure. So, to answer the first question, you, you're correct, which is why I made the suggestion that the council member, or anybody was, um, make a recommendation, um, of, you know, their own recommendation for a city manager to explore options or, um, different methods by which he could manage the employees of the city. So, um, to that regard, there was no formal action or vote taken on that issue. Um, you are correct, the city council only votes on items that are agendized and published and made public. And during the council member comment section, you know, it's a free discussion back and forth between the city manager and the council in regards to providing, you know, viewpoints from the city council members. In regards to the amicus brief, um, that's something we have not, uh, explored, and obviously, if that is a direction the council would like to take, we're more than happy to provide some options and/or provide an amicus brief to that litigation.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for the public?
Yes, this is Mike Mendoza, Natsu Road, across from Don Meyer Park. Um, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Baptista first for acknowledging our veterans, and, uh, uh, definitely giving the community advice on how to display the flag with the lighting, or removing it at dusk, or, or, yeah, dusk. Um, second, also, I'd like to, uh, thank the maintenance department for providing the extra trash receptacles at the park. It's definitely greatly improved, uh, the situation that we were having there, with just all the trash being left behind and everything. Um, and then also, I'd like to ask the steps that would be, that we would have to take to possibly get a little bit more lighting. We've had numerous, uh, numerous events of just fireworks being, you know, blown off outside the park. There was two, uh, that were done a couple of weeks ago, one last night, and then, uh, a couple of months ago, it was happening also. So, just, um, the police department has done very well to responding with calls and everything, and I appreciate it. Um, but just wondering if maybe some extra lighting was around the playground and the park, that maybe it might deter some of the riffraff that comes in at night.
Thank you, uh, this is council member Regal, I know, I've talked to several, uh, people from that area that are concerned about the lighting situation. Uh, so I would definitely advocate and, uh, uh, work with the city manager to, to address that issue, if, uh, who's I want to add to it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mendoza, it's been a pleasure working with you on the different items, uh, related to the park, and welcome to Livingston. Uh, as it relates to the fireworks, uh, yeah, that is something that we are constantly having to address and deal with, and I, I believe that the last council, also brought up, and I know that, uh, our chief is, uh, working on that with his personnel. And then, we of course are, are sending out, uh, educational, uh, pamphlets to continue to let people know about, uh, the non-use of, um, not allowed, of, of legal fireworks. Uh, as it relates to, uh, lighting, uh, yes, we'll go ahead and, and look at that, um, you know, our Public Works Department, our Engineering Department, and I, we will look at that, we'll start to look at where we can possibly get some funding, uh, and so that we can allocate for that. Uh, um, as, and then just as a, a quick little reminder for council, uh, we did apply for, uh, the, 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 uh, if you might recall, we were applying, we're working with, uh, UC Davis and the Lighting Institute to look for some funding for lighting. And, um, so we're, we're hopeful we can get that, and then if there's an opportunity down the road to incorporate another park, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, look into that. But for now, we'll, we'll look and see what kind of resources we have, and we'll go from there, so we'll get back to you on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and, um, I would like to, uh, offer up, uh, donated time. I am, uh, a representative with the lo- local electrical union in the area, and I know I have members here in the Livingston, in the city of Livingston, and I could definitely reach out to them to get, uh, maybe labor donated, if that would be possible, to help out with the cost.
Oh, wonderful, we'll certainly, um, make contact with you to, to, um, come up with the game plan, so thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, just for the record, uh, Mayor Protim Garcia is back on the line. Any other member of the public?
Yes, I would like to speak again.
Uh, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, a couple of things, um, I guess, uh, one, I want to thank, uh, Donna Duffy for doing that candidate forum. I think that's something that a lot of residents in Livingston are looking forward to, so, um, uh, Donna, thank you, I was curious, how do, what time will that be at the park, um, how long will it be, um, those kinds of things, um, and then, uh, and if there's any way that, um, residents can help out with that. And then, number two, um, uh, I'm curious, so like, was there a decision made about like, the City Hall being open, um, eight to five now? And, um, or, I mean, I, it seems to me that I think, uh, the city manager has done a great job in terms of, you know, keeping folks safe, um, having modified schedules, like me, as a, as a resident, being a member of Livingston, I'm supportive of that, I'm not, I'm not, and I'm sure a lot of folks feel comfortable with just like pushing and just having everyone back at City Hall, I mean, until it's deemed completely safe, or as safe as much as possible, because I know some council members are really pushing for that. And my thinking is, if, if, um, if we can't have live meetings where folks can attend, then we should also kind of be careful in terms of how we open City Hall. So, I know who says we do a good job with that, but I'm just thinking, um, if, if I can't attend council meetings, how come, you know, our employees are asked to like come in and, you know, uh, be requested, demanded to come in like that? And also, along with that note, um, in terms of council meeting attendance, like, are city council members required to attend live? Or it could just be on the live streaming, like, throughout this COVID period? Like, what are the requirements in terms of, uh, the attendance, or just attendance, attendance in general, um, for someone to be on the council? I'm curious about that. And then, uh, my last point, uh, no, I think that's, that's all, thank you, uh, supervisors, and also for getting that grant, that money for the VFW in Livingston, great job. So, um, yeah, those are my comments and my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Um, Donna, you want to provide just, uh, uh, a link or a place where they could, uh, people in front of public could obtain that information, uh, moving forward? Okay, so, um, just, just in general, here, I know that, uh, the city manager reported that the City Hall will be open, uh, now from eight to five. Um, and due to, uh, you know, obviously, uh, the need for, um, you know, provide customer service, uh, ballots will be turned, be turned in, um, uh, City Hall as well, uh, who's there, you want to add anything else to that? And then, just a other question, uh, Trevor, you want to chime in in regards to the council members, um, requirement to attend the members' um, requirement to attend the council meetings, uh, during COVID?
Sure. So, the governor issued an executive order N dash twenty-nine dash two zero, which suspends certain provisions of the Brown Act, which typically guides and regulates how the council conducts its meeting, including posting of agendas, um, who is required to be physically present and who can participate telephonically or remotely. Given the COVID-19 crisis and the public health concerns with um, person-to-person contacts and in-person meetings, those requirements have been lacked so long as the city meets certain noticing requirements, which it has on its current agenda, and also the subsequent agendas that have been released by the city, which give notice of how the public may participate and also view the meeting live, um, which is through the YouTube and also telephonically through uh, the conference call line. Um, and so there is no requirement that every council member be physically present in the council chambers, so long as on the agenda the public is notified that some council members may be participating remotely through the teleconferencing function.
Thank you, Trevor.
And then my question, my question was also in general, like pre-COVID, what were the council member requirements for attendance?
So, pre-COVID, um, if a council member was going to be participating remotely, um, they would, the location of their participation would need to be posted publicly on the agenda, as well as, um, the agenda would also need to be posted where the council member was going to be participating remotely. And typically, that location would also need to be a place that's accessible for members of the public.
Thank you, Trevor. Uh, any other member of the public have questions?
I just want to make
Good thing. Uh, somebody making a comment? Oh, hi Maria. Go ahead.
I can, so this is Donna Duffy regarding the candidates forum. If it's approved that we have the uh, the park to do it, it will be at ten AM on Saturday. And notification will be through social media, word of mouth, email, and um, a couple of signs. People will uh, stand and hold to uh, educate the public over Thursday and Friday. If someone's interested, they can reach out to me. I'll get my email, the word hello, the word
You want to provide your email?
Yeah, my e- if somebody's interested, they can email me, the word hello, the word from, the letter D, at yahoo dot com.
Thank you so much. Anybody else on the public?
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
I hear a lot about city hall being closed. And I hear the city manager saying that it's necessary to keep the public, or the city safe.
Uh, we can barely hear you.
And we don't know who you is.
Hello, can you hear me?
We don't know who you is.
Can you please identify yourself and uh, we could barely hear you.
James Smith, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
A little better. Go ahead and identify yourself and go ahead and make your comment.
I hear that the city managers, I hear that the city manager is doing a good job by balancing, or by keeping the people safe.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Okay, no further comments. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. Uh, I know that items were pulled for discussion, but go ahead, go ahead and read the consent agenda, uh, items on the consent, consent calendar act for, uh, considered routine or non-controversial will be enacted by one law unless separate action requested by the city manager or city council members. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless number to the council or city manager requests that specific items be removed. In this situation, uh, we have uh, uh, removed uh, the three items or four items, uh, for a separate discussion. So, we'll go on, go with item number one, approval of warrant registered dated October first, twenty twenty, um, which is according to section thirty-seven, two zero two of the government code of the state of California present year with summary of the demands against the city of Livingston covering applications to be paid during the period of September eleventh, twenty twenty through October first, twenty twenty. Uh, there were, are there any specific questions, um,
Oh.
Councilwoman Baptista that you have regarding this item?
I have warrant three nine eight and warrant three nine nine to Central San Joaquin Valley Risk Management. The grand total for both these warrants was one, one hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. I just wanted to question, what exactly is that?
Hi, um, this is Vanessa with finance. Those are our general liability payments. We make quarterly payments to the RMA and you see this large payment that come out every quarter for our general liability insurer.
Thank you. Also, we have Collins and Sholler Planning Consultants on warrant number two five nine. What is the work that they do?
Yeah, Collins and Shettler is the firm that Randy Hatch uh, works for. And so they, they're part of our planning and building department.
Also, there's Conco West Incorporated, warrant four four seven, an amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand, sixty-seven and fifty cents. I just want to know what that was for as well.
Yeah. Uh, Conco West is, is the firm that's working on our well fourteen and sixteen. And so that's part of our TCP treatment process. Yeah, Mid Valley IT is our, uh, basically our technology and um, information, information systems company. So, Mr. Sanders and, and they do work for um, basically Public Works, City Hall and the Police Department.
Okay. And one more. We have warrant two eight seven, West Coast Co. Consultants Incorporated, twenty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents.
Uh, yes, WC Three Consultants, they're the ones who um, uh, are building inspector, are permit tech, and then the E three sixty. And so they do all our plan checking, our inspections on the building side.
And that, and is that a monthly payment? Is that a contracted monthly payment? Or is that for other additional works that they do?
So, we have a contract with them, a monthly contract, but of course, the, the amount is going to vary because of the amount of projects that come in. And they get a certain percentage on the plan inspection fee side. So, that number will vary per month.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all for that.
Okay, do we have a motion for this item?
This is this part, right? The warrant. I have a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant registered dated October first, twenty twenty.
Uh, I have a motion by Councilwoman Baptista. Do we have a second? I'll second it.
Monica, go ahead, welcome. Roll call. Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Por Tem Garcia? Mayor Por Tem Garcia?
Uh, yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay, we have item number two now, the now claim uh, for damages from Javier Rodriguez. Uh, does the attorney or who say?
Uh, so, so in general, um, as you all know, any, any claims that we receive, we automatically submit those to our insurance. In this case, it's Ames. They do their own independent um, evaluation and study and research on it. They deem whether they have to pay out or not. This particular one, they sent it to us and uh, like all claims, and uh, for uh, retune denial, uh, or rejecting, uh, the claim. Um, and in point of reference, apparently there was an elderly gentleman with a, a son, I'm not sure of the age group. And rather than using the, going around the uh, the canal there, they actually decided to get onto the plank. And unfortunately, the plank, uh, wood plank broke and sustained some major injuries. And it's my understanding that they were medevaced, um, to the hospital and he's endured several surgeries, et cetera.
Any questions, uh, Councilwoman Baptista?
I just wanted, um, for Mr. Ramirez to clarify that something such as this is for the claim is that they come here to us, but they are already set for denial so that it can move forward through another process. So, I know that the, the public is really concerned about this item. Um, but be denied here first so that it can move forward. Correct?
Yeah, so of course, um, this is denied, it's part of the process. And they can certainly look at other options to pursue their overall, um, uh, claim.
Thank you. Uh, do we have motion for this item?
Are you going to take comment? Question?
Go ahead. Do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, my question would be is how would we find out, how could we find out how this particular item is being handled by the insurance agency? And how could we find out what the resolution to it all would be?
Trevor, you want to take this one?
Um, well, the insurance agency, I believe, has denied the claim. So, that would effectively end the insurance agency's involvement in the matter.
So Catherine, uh, to answer your question, uh, if, if the, if the claimant wants to share their denial letter, of course, you know, independently to you, you can certainly do that. But uh, as far as, uh, I don't know, Trevor, if there was a records request, if that's information that would be disclosed or not disclosed. But at this point, the, the claim has been denied. And it comes through formality, comes through the council, which then we deny. But they have other, other options to, to pursue if they so choose.
Trevor, is that correct that seeking
That's the correct assessment. And any member, any member of the public is permitted to submit a, a public records request. However, um, you know, those, I'm, I would believe those pertinent records that the member of the public might be seeking would, would be with the insurance carrier, not with the city.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Any further questions from the council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Jason Ross again. What time of the day was this and why were they out there? And what was wrong with the plank? And how old were they that they were walking on?
Uh, Mr. Ross, I don't know the details to that, but one of the things that I can tell you is that that's not even on city property. Uh, that belongs to Merced Irrigation District.
So, what is Merced Irrigation doing about it?
Uh,
For the, the, the amendment that I read, you know, they, they stated that the city was responsible. If MID is responsible for that, what did they not do to protect the citizen?
We're certainly working with MID to look at, and I'm sure that, you know, they are looking at ways to mitigate that. But just like the Foster Farms litigation, we, you know, they can make up, you know, they can try to sue anybody and everybody, you know, all parties. So, you can be sued for anything. So, I, I know that's pretty general, Mr. Ross, but um, but we are working with MID and not just in this particular case, but uh, that's why when we have different subdivisions and different projects in the area, we require that the underground, the canal to, you know, mitigate for these kind of things and lower the risk of liability. So, that's an ongoing thing. So, thank you for asking.
Uh, just one more question real quick. Is the city responsible for putting lighting up there and signs?
Uh, I would, I would, I would bunt that over, because I don't really know if that would, if that's the case. You're specifically talking about the lighting at that intersection. I, the only thing that I can say is, uh, the only thing that I can say is if, if the uh, our insurance carrier rejected a claim is because we have no liability.
All right.
And so they would defend us, they would defend us, um, if there was litigation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Any questions from council? Does anybody have a motion?
I make the motion to deny the claim for damages from Javier Rodriguez.
Motion by Councilwoman Baptista. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Uh, motion by You can do it. The council member Kang. Seconded by Councilmember Kang. Monica, roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Por Tem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. Uh, move on to item number three. Uh, this is a resolution approving an agreement with Artland Inc. for comprehensive roofing materials and support services and other agency manages, like we could agree on. Uh, Vanessa, will you be taking this item? Councilmember Baptista, specific questions regarding this item?
I, I know this has been under, um, discussion for the, for the, um, police department. Yes, um, I, I was just reading under that, uh, the proposal for the, for the visit that is, that is being, um, looked at is the Water Roofing Associates. Again, this, this is only valid for sixty days from the proposal list. And then under all the classifications and exclusions, um, there are a lot of things that are excluded from I get that there's like over a $400,000 budget for these kinds of things in the police department that was adopted, but there are many things here with roofing that, you know, they don't know with what they said that they are going to be doing, what they're going to be doing, and the things that they might find once they're up there. It's not part of any of this quote, so I'm just wondering how much of this are we going to, we're going to approve this for the $99,000, correct? But then there's all these other exclusions, so we're going to run into the part where we approve it for this amount, but then all these other things are going to fall in line and, again, it would be up to you to negotiate all these other things and approve and move forward with whatever they need to get the job done, correct?
So typically, in these particular projects, we ask for a 10% contingency, because, again, under, when you have a roof and unless you, you know, you have institutional knowledge of exactly what's up there and so forth, then, you know, you can actually then convey the different type of material, what's there and so forth, in this particular case, because it's not, that's why they put some exclusions. But I think staff who specifically worked on this talked to the different contractors, and I don't know if they want to elaborate a little bit further on some of the exclusions. Anthony?
Yeah, this is Anthony. We're not seeing any problems arising from this project. The exclusions are permits are excluded, bonds are included, that this is all common. Masonary work is excluded. There will be no masonry work performed. It's all cut and dry, work being performed. So we're not seeing a need for these exclusions to be paying any more than what we're going to be approving in this contract. And if it does arise, they will talk to us and explain before anything's done.
And so the contract is not to exceed that amount that's listed.
Can I comment on this? I'm with the manufacturing company for the roofing project.
Thank you. We had him on the line.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm with the garden company. My name's Zachary Esquera. I've been working with Water Roofing Associates in regards to the exclusions and unforeseen conditions because they do arise on projects. Being that it is a 10 to 15-year restoration project, we won't be cutting into the roof deck at all. The only thing we will be replacing is actually the walls. There is a $5,000 additional cost that could be agreed to at the time of contract being executed, and the only thing that will do is add to additional insulation on those tall walls, on the equipment wall inside the PD roof. It's not needed. It could be added, but it's not needed. So as far as I'm concerned, there are no additional costs that will be brought up. We have a very good relationship with the low bid contractor, and I think Anthony and Tony could vouch for us when we say if something pops up, they should have seen it when they bid it. And we do a very good job of making sure any additional costs are nipped in the bud if they aren't necessary. So we do have the City of Livingston's best interest at heart, so I don't want anybody to have any uncertain feelings or unsure costs come up throughout the project. So we do have your guys' back on that one. Just want to get that out there.
Thank you, Zach, for staying online so long. We appreciate it.
No worries.
Thank you for that comment. Any other questions, Councilmember Batista?
No, thank you, Zach, for being on the line and answering those questions. Again, I just want to be fully aware of what might come up and what is stated on your proposal that we would be adopting.
Thank you. Since there was open up for discussion and separate item, open it up to the public. Any questions from the public? Okay, any further questions from the council? Councilmember King?
No, I got no comment.
Mayor Portem Garcia?
Negative.
And I don't have any comments. So do we have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion approving, resolution approving an agreement with Garland Incorporated for comprehensive roofing material and support services and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
A motion by Councilmember Batista. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mayor Portem Garcia. Monica, roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Batista?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay, our next section is discussion of potential action items. A couple councilmembers have requested a quick three-minute recess, because such a long meeting, before we begin. So we're going to take a three-minute recess for staff to use the restroom or drink water. We'll be right back.
Motion by Councilmember Baptista, do I have second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Kang. Michael, who can go call please.
Go call, Councilmember Baptista.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Councilmember Kang.
Yes.
Mayor Ponce Garcia.
Yes.
I'm going to press for a vote of four zero.
Okay, our next section is discussion of potential action items. A couple councilmembers are requesting a quick three-minute recess such a long meeting before we begin. So we're going to take a three-minute recess for staff to use the restroom or drink water. We'll be right back. Which is a discussion regarding the recent approval of site plan and the design review twenty twenty dash zero three for construction of two duplexes at eight forty-nine Pruso Street, Rosa Martinez, ATN, zero twenty-four dash one six-two dash zero one-one.
Yeah, Councilmember Aguilar. I'll go ahead and kick off this discussion. So the public's probably asking, you know, this is an item that had already been approved by council and why is it on the agenda? The reason it's on the agenda is that we actually received a petition that was provided to City Hall and we received it on September twenty-eighth. And so it's listed on our agenda packet as a discussion, not an action item, to give this, give the public an opportunity and a platform to share and communicate some of their concerns and then look at council whether or not they want to provide some type of direction. So at this point, our planning director will give a little overview of the project and then of course, Councilmember Aguilar can open it up to the public and they can share whatever comments and concerns that they have. We also met with three of the individuals that are on the petition onsite and had a couple of discussions with them. We talked about the traffic and the safety of the kids and how to mitigate that and they also brought up some other concerns. So with that, I'll turn it over to Randy Hatch.
Go ahead, Randy. Okay, thank you, Jose, for that introduction. The last time you looked at this project was almost two months ago. It was on August the fourth, so it's almost exactly two months ago. And it came before you as a request by the applicant and owner to take this piece of property, which is shown on the slide. It's on the corner of Pruso and F Street. The vacant piece of property is zoned R two, which is medium-density residential and the request was to put in two duplexes, so there'd be four units on this property. And that requires a use permit from the Planning Commission and then a recommendation for a site plan design review from the Planning Commission, which is then forwarded to the City Council for final action on the site plan design review. The, um, the item went to the Planning Commission and what it basically is, it's two duplexes that are oriented east-west. So there are two units that are faced to the east and two units that are facing to the west. And, um, so they are set up that way and we can see in the next slide how that is shown on the site plan there. It's a little hard to see, but they're side by side. And there is required two parking spaces for each unit. So with four units altogether, there is a requirement for eight parking spaces. Four of those spaces face Pruso and four of those parking spaces face the alley behind the duplex unit. This alley is owned by the city and the alley is scheduled to be improved. We did get some grant funds for that. And so that would have been a requirement for this project, but since the city is using money from outside to provide a paved alleyway, that is not necessary. So they meet the requirements for setbacks. They meet the requirements for heights. They meet the requirements for parking. Eight spaces in total are required, eight spaces in total are provided. There is no provision for, in the code, for any guest parking on a small unit such as this. And so none is being suggested. So that means that guests would be parking at the curb, which is allowed. Now, there's no prohibition for curb parking in this part of town. And so this is how the project came forward. The, you know, part of the site plan design review is to look at the overall structure and its colors, materials, architectural features. Planning Commission looked at that and said it blends in, forwarded that to the City Council. You looked at that and agreed that it's compatible with the neighborhood, compatible with the existing homes. There is a mixture of duplexes and single-family homes in this R two area. On the south side of F Street, it's a single-family area, an R one area. So a project such as this would not be allowed on the south side of F Street, but zoning provisions allow it on the north side of F Street. And there are other duplexes in the immediate vicinity here. And so, um, given the need for rental multifamily housing, staff was favorable to this project. It met all the code requirements, complied with everything. And, um, staff made a recommendation and Planning Commission endorsed that recommendation and ultimately, the City Council approved it. Now, one thing that, just before we went to the Planning Commission, I think it was approximately ten, twelve minutes before the meeting started, we did receive an email from a surrounding, you know, a resident in the area complaining or being concerned about the, not on this property, but on the property immediately to the east. On the other side of the alley, there is a metal kind of corrugated garage and it is located eighteen inches back of sidewalk, as I recall. And so the comment was made in the email that if someone is going south on the alleyway coming to an intersection with F Street, that that corrugated garage blocks the vision. And it does, since it is only eighteen inches behind. You do have to edge out a little bit into the roadway and if there are people parked on F Street, it does create a potential hazard. But that is, you know, per city codes and standards. And so I brought that information forward to the Planning Commission and saying that we really don't have any ability to have the developer of this project, which is on a separate piece of property that's owned by a different individual, fix a potential site distance issue on an adjacent piece of property. We have no nexus, we have no ability as a city to compel or suggest or require the owner of the property immediately on the other side of the alley to address a potential site hazard. So with that comment, both the Planning Commission moved it forward to the council and I believe I made that same comment at the council meeting. And again, it was moved forward and it was approved unanimously by both bodies. And so that's kind of the background. And as the city manager mentioned, um, several weeks after that occurred, we got a request from some of the residents in the area to, they're concerned about this project, thinks it's a safety hazard. We met with them and, um, and they wanted to put it on the agenda for possible discussion. You know, fortunately, we've got the Attorney's Office represented here in Traverse and I'm sure back up my opinion that there's no ability for the city to require this project to do something relative to a piece of development on an adjoining piece of property that is not owned by the same individual. And that, um, in the petition, the individuals who signed it listed various reasons why they're concerned. One of them is traffic that would be generated by these two duplexes, these four new units. And according to standard planning calculations for trip generation and so forth, a approximately, this, these two duplexes would generate approximately eight, um, trip-ins, um, per day. And so that, on a peak hour basis, the maximum that the calculations from ITC, which is what we use, it's the International Traffic Council, they have a trip generation manual, which I've consulted. And it, one would expect no more than four peak hour trips from this development in the morning and likewise in the peak hour, in the PM. So there are four trips possibly coming from this going through the impacted intersection of Pruso and F Street, which I would suggest is insignificant. You can't even measure it. And indeed, that's why using the city's sequel process, this is a project, and so I evaluated that and according to state categorical exemptions guidelines, the traffic here is not significant. And so no issues or requirements were imposed on it. It meets what's called a categorical exemption. And so that is, um, the information, the background on this particular project. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to address them. Thanks.
Yeah, just, I'll just step in real quick, Randy. This is the city manager speaking. Just one correction and then one comment. The council adopted this one on a four-one vote and was, it was not unanimous.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, and then as it relates to, you know, for those petitioners, you know, of course, the, any additional traffic and any additional safety concerns towards the kids, of course, you know, there, we are all, those are all important. So we, we understand the dynamics and that's one of the reasons why we put them in contact with our traffic committee, who's headed by our police chief. And it's a makeup of different stakeholders in the community and staff. So with that, we'll turn it over to the mayor, I mean, Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you so much, goodnight. So yeah, let's open up this item to the public for comments. I know the petitioners, I believe, are on the line and go ahead and ask your questions, comments, present your concerns.
Good evening, my name is Hilda Pimentel, eight two three Pruso Street. I'm here today to present a petition to request to reconsider the construction of the two duplexes, four units, at eight forty-nine Pruso Street. Yes, like stated, on July thirteenth, a neighbor in person communicated orally a concern at City Hall to Filomena Redondo. At that point, the concern of safety, children, traffic was mentioned. At which point Filomena also recommended to send an email to Randy Hatch, email that was never replied to, to this day. We know that it was supposedly presented. Did we hear that it was presented? Did we get any notification on what the next step for us to follow? We received nothing. On August fourth, we asked for Paul Semra to help and speak for us on the request to give us time to gather what needed to be done for a formal petition since we had not received any reply on our concerns. At which time, they moved forward and approved the proposal of the duplexes. We are here today presenting this formal petition with concerns from neighbors within three hundred feet from the planned duplexes and community members with the following concerns. First, student safety. Students walk through the street, which, you know, as to some, like mentioned, it's not a big problem, but it is when multiple schools use this sidewalk on a daily to walk to multiple schools in our community. And being driven to and from schools, multiple schools, for example, the Child Development Center, Delmar Herndon, Livingston Middle School and the Livingston High School. That blind spot with that building, like say this, in another property is hazardous to us or to our community because that does block our view. That does block anybody's view as they pull out of this alley, which will make it an unsafe, unsafe area for them to be using as a driveway. Public safety, the two driveways on Pruso facing the community center are going to be, to close proximity to the four-way stop and crosswalk. These cars are going to be pulling out in front of a busy intersection. Now, yes, it's busy in the AM and it's busy in the PM, just as it is throughout the day, but it's peak hours, our AM and PM during school hours. Parking is also a concern. It's a concern because, yes, this is in a busy intersection. Traffic's backed up daily with parents shopping and picking up students. And well, tenants, like stated by Randy, tenants, will they be provided with a parking? Because if you see the plans, we can see that there's six parks, one of which is a handicap. Where are the other two? Because if you look at the plans, we do not see the other two. We see two in the alley, two, four in the alley, two facing Pruso and just the handicap. Yes, we know that they park in the curb, which makes it even a worse hazardous condition here because now there's going to be blockage. Blockage from the building, blockage from cars being parked there and, and, you know, cars pulling in and out of this intersection in front of other cars that are going on to the school or to other schools in this area. The building itself, our district does not provide crosswalk at F Street and Pruso Street intersection, which has a concern to our concern of children's safety. Children walk through the street on a daily. There is nobody going to be there helping them cross and it's already going to be unsafe, like stated earlier. The building itself will block visibility considering at least eight additional cars coming out of the duplexes, driveways versus vehicles and single-family homes in this neighborhood. This will affect the safety of pedestrians as there will, will to vehicles in the area. Keeping in mind, the most affected will be the children and the children's safety, like stated, walking to multiple schools in this area. That is one of the main streets. Even though it's not our main street, it's a main street too. People commuting to different areas of the city, different schools of the city, children walking back and forth from one school to another, from school to their home. So we are here tonight with all those concerns and asking to please reconsider the construction of these two duplexes. We do know that, you know, we did miss those meetings, but like stated, we were not notified of what to, or what steps to follow. We are asking, you know, this traffic survey, which is, like you stated, not as significant for this area, to which, to some of us, it might not be this busy area, but it is a busy area. And that small, as stated, structure that's going to be built there is a big project for this area because we're already impacted. There's constant traffic there, backup, parking is an issue in that area as well. And we do have those concerns. We have looked at the plans as well. We see that the setbacks, setbacks are too close to the curb, to where it's going to block visibility. There's a fire hydrant there. The parking is right next to the fire hydrant. What is, what is the protocol? What is the setback for this hydrant? There's an electrical post there that is going to be blocking one of the driveways exits in the back alley. That is hazardous right there. They could back into it, they could hit that post and it's not going to be safe. The driveway distance from the corner setbacks, those driveways are going to be right next to the curb, like stated earlier. And, you know, again, those driveways in the alley are unsafe. Do we have the accurate measurements of this project being built? You know, we need to think of that and see those measurements and make sure that those measurements, and that's our question to, to the city planner or Randy, were all the measurements done correctly or is everything accurate? And also, we wanted to bring, point out that, that yes, we did get notified, we did get letters, which letters were sent to us not giving and providing us residents with enough time to go and express our concerns to the city with enough time for it to be in the agenda. It was stated on the staff report from August fourth that the owner has provided those parkings, but like I said, we would need clarification on this as well because we see six and one handicap. The law was originally an R two. It changed back to an R one in two thousand and three. Our other question is, when did it change back to an R two and why? The notice of building should have been addressed not only to neighbors within three hundred feet, but also to the community. Both Pruso and F Street are main streets to many community members, which will, which will be affected by adding traffic to the area that is already saturated with traffic. So my last comment here, question to you guys is, what is more important, the revenue or the life of someone? Because if you live here and you see it on a daily, you see what children have to be when they have to run back to the curb because it's already so busy there. It's already not safe for them to be walking through there and now we're going to make it worse. So, yeah, so our request is, you know, if we could reconsider the construction, the construction of those two duplexes, four units at eight forty-nine Pruso Street.
Hi, Hilda, this is Jose, the city manager. First of all, thank you very much for exercising your community engagement rights and providing the petition and all of your questions and your time. So we'll do the best we can to answer all your questions. First of all, you brought the question up with regards to, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure you can hear me. So, so one of the things that you asked about was, you know, setbacks, you know, property lines, the utility poles, enough parking, all those things. Very, very important. Thank you for digging deep into this. So I'm going to give you a, basically how the process that we use in order to actually look at the plans. Number one, whenever there is anything that's off-site is engineering addresses. Anything that's the building and inside is the building department, of course. And all of these plans are reviewed by their respective departments. And all of these plans are reviewed by the respective departments. So, they look for everything and anything. And so, now, are they human, do they make mistakes? Absolutely, but in this particular case, after you brought these things up to me, I went and, I went to, back to, uh, all departments, had them triple check this, because this is double check, but in this case, triple check, to make sure that, you know, that, that there, uh, wasn't any issues. And if there were, well, to, to, uh, communicate them to my department. And, uh, all of the departments have reassured me that everything is correct, that, uh, that there's no issues with the, that they, that the right measurements, because you keep in mind that there's different groups that are involved here. You know, you have the surveyor, you have the architect, you have the, uh, in this, in this case, the city engineer, and then you have the planning department, the building inspection department, uh, WC three, and all these different folks. So, that is, has been addressed. Now, as it relates specifically to the number of parking stalls, that was also brought up to the department. And Randy, uh, uh, went ahead and, and showed that there is the eight stalls, and the one is a compact, uh, for a small car, with, and I don't know if we have a pointer that we can, shh, if you can just kind of...
I can, I can see it there, but, um, still, I'm going back to, there's a handicap there. What if the person, the tenant on that unit is not handicapped? You're still short one, because you, you're providing one compact. Now, if that person doesn't own a, a small car, that parking serves, you know, defeats the purpose. Now, you, I do see the handicap there, so where's that? What if that person is a handicap? So, is that tenant going to be able to park in a handicap zone?
So, Randy, if you can go over the, the, the parking stalls, each one of them.
Okay, thank you for your, um, questions. The, um, handicap parking spot is located, um, adjacent to, um, Prusso, and it's located on the, the northern piece of the property, and, and it's indicated by a, on the drawings, by a handicapped, um, um, designator. Next to it is the striped, um, uh, handicapped loading and unloading zone. And then next to that, closer to the unit, is the compact space. And, um, a compact space is allowed, one for, um, this particular, up to twenty percent of the required parking could be, um, compact. And so, here we're looking at, um, one space out of, um, um, eight that's required. And so, that is roughly twenty percent. And, um, now, does that mean that that space belongs to, um, the closest, uh, unit? No, it doesn't. And, and so, the, if an individual who lives in that duplex does not have a compact car, but someone else within the area does, they can use it. Same thing with the handicap parking. If, if the person, um, who needs a handicap parking space lives in any of the, the four units, they, they park there. And if there is no person that has a handicap space, then it's not used. You know, it's no different than, uh, handicap parking in an office complex or a public school or what have you. Um, the, um, city does not assign spaces to the nearest, um, dwelling unit. And, and so, there, there's that. Um, we do look at all of the details when the plans come in. The engineers and, um, the, the building officials verify where the poles are for the power and so forth, and where curb parking may be allowed. And if there is a, um, fire hydrant that prevents parking right in front of the unit, then the developer has the choice of relocating that, um, fire hydrant with the approval of the fire department and, um, Public Works for the Water. Or, that curb space is not as convenient. There is no requirement that the curb spaces be utilized, um, have to be within so many feet from the lot with, where you expect the, the people to, um, um, be going to and from. Um, the entire area, curb area can be, uh, utilized. Um, you don't own the, um, curb parking on the street in front of your home, in front of your apartment, in front of your duplex. That is, that is available for anybody. And, um, so, so that's how those parking spaces work.
Yeah, and then, Hilda, as it relates to, uh, you know, student safety and, and the crossing of, of our youth and, and adults, you know, we take that very seriously. So, uh, there is ways for us to, as a municipality, to look at mitigating the, uh, the issues as relates to the crossings and, uh, the, um, mitigating traffic and looking at doing some improvements. So, for instance, uh, in conveying your concerns and the rest of the petitioners to the, uh, traffic committee, uh, we can look at different mitigation measures. Uh, what kind of mitigation measures? Well, that's something that will be discussed, but it could be anything from lighted crosswalks to, uh, you know, stop signs with lighted LED, red lights, and, uh, other, other safety measures. So, definitely, uh, we appreciate you, uh, bringing these, uh, issues to our attention.
Um, sorry, uh, just to, to go back on that parking. I understand what Randy was sharing. I still, he still didn't answer my questions, there's still shortage of parking. And, and the thing is, they, they will provide parking.
Let, yeah, let me, let me ask him a different way so that he understands you. Yeah, let me ask him so that, uh, a different way so that he understands. So, so basically, Randy, what he's saying is, okay, what are the requirements for parking for this specific, uh, duplex? Is, it's based on a certain formula? Uh, if they're required to do eight parking, does eight mean, eight parking, uh, and one handicap? Or one handicap, uh, and seven parking? Or how is all that calculated? And are they, uh, are they required to, uh, have, uh, a certain amount of, of, uh, parking and versus handicap parking? How's that work, so she understands?
Okay, well, well, thank you for that clarification. Um, the code says that, um, each duplex is required to have two off-street parking spaces. So, there are four units, um, two duplexes, four units. So, that would be eight parking spaces. And, um, the, you, you may count a handicap space as one of the required parking spaces. You may also count a compact space as one of the, um, required parking spaces. And so, eight, um, parking spaces are required for these, um, um, four units, and eight is provided. Four along the Prusso side, four along the alley side. And so, that's how we come up with that.
Um, yeah, it, so again, my question goes back to, that corner is already busy. That corner is already full of traffic. The corner is very busy with pedestrians and, and cars going back and forth. Cars being parked in the curb, even though, yes, they're admitted to park in the curb, how safe is this going to be? How close to the curb can they park? How close to the busy intersection can these cars be parked and be pulling out of this intersection? I'm going back to, those driveways should, uh, should have some kind of, um, setback as well. I live further down the street, and me pulling out of my driveway is not safe in the morning. I have to leave my house by seven fifteen, seven twenty, because those cars are flying from that corner, and I li, I do not live that close, as those cars are going to be pulling out of that driveway. Um, fog, when the, that's going to be a busy intersection, unsafe. And then having the fog there as well, that's going to make it worse. And yes, my concern is a lot of kids walk through there. I'm here today advocating for all those children and all those families that, um, are not at home to provide that transportation, and their children have to walk to school, and their children are not going to be safe wa, walking down that street, down F Street, down that, that F, uh, intersection, down that sidewalk. And again, yes, I understand there's a building that has been there, but if we could avoid a, a fatal accident, I would want, I would want to know that I tried my very best, and that we have, have neighbors came together to advocate, because we live here and we see it on a daily. It's not just once in a while. Okay, when this, uh, traffic survey was done, was this traffic survey done during distance learning? That's my question as well, because if it's done during regular school hours, during the regular school year when it's busy, and we have multiple families, uh, you know, using that street back and forth, it's a difference. It's a difference. If you go there at noon, it's different from the morning and, and afternoon PM school traffic. And again, children are going to be unsafe. Sorry, can I add something? Yes.
Um, the only time there's ever traffic there is during school. I've lived here for twenty years in various spots of Livingston, and there's literally no traffic in that street, only during school hours.
Like, exactly when kids are walking and, and, and from school, and parents are commuting back and forth from school. And what would be the difference adding the apartment complex? Because it's definitely not... And exactly in what section of the, of this intersection do you live? Because if you live here, if, yes...
Sorry, guys, sorry. One at a time, please. Um, Hilda, um, thank you for your comments, we'll continue the discussion. I'm going to open it up for the rest of the public to make comments. Um, anybody else want to make a comment? Or you want to continue adding?
Yeah, we wanted, we still had more. Um, plan say ninety feet wide, and it's only eighty-six feet wide. Did you guys check on the actual accurate measurement?
Uh, yeah, Hilda, I, because you brought that up to my attention, I, I went ahead and provided that information over to engineering, and that was verified. So, all that was taken into consideration.
So, we know they're four feet short, because when that sidewalk was at, on that...
All, everything was, e- everything was calculated, and there is no, um, shortage. Everything meets, meets the requirements, according to engineering.
Would we be able to see those reports? Because we've measured ourselves, and we've been out there various times, and...
Uh, yes, yeah, we can, we can certainly...
Even the people that are building there, and they, they are short four feet, like I said. That, that's all...
Yeah, we'll be more than happy to meet you, uh, either here at City Hall or on-site, and we'll actually show you. And, and if there was any issues, there's errors and omissions, and so, they're responsible for anything that is not, uh, communicated correctly. And again, they triple-checked it, so that's what they're conveying to me, and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Anything else, Hilda? So, I could move it, move, uh, to the rest of the public, see if they want to comment?
Can we know what the setback is from F Street?
Uh, the setback from a F Street for a structure is five feet. And from the interior... Yes, go ahead, please?
Oh, sorry, even though it's a corner lot?
Uh, that is correct, because it's...
And corner lots have to have different setbacks. Fifteen feet...
Uh, there's different kinds of corner lots. Um, this is what's termed a, um, it's not a reverse corner lot. And so, um, um, five feet is the, the setback if it was a reverse corner lot, which means there's immediately, um, there's a driveway adjacent to, um, uh, the property. And, um, and a driveway is, is not an alleyway. So, an alleyway is not counted as a driveway. That, yes, that is adjacent to it, but it's not a driveway. And, um, so the setback requirement is five feet. And it's universal, uh, throughout the city on, uh, non-reverse corner lots. And there are many, many, um, corner lots throughout town that have structures five feet setback.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy? I got a question for Randy.
Who's this?
Apolonia Cuzneros.
Okay, so we're moving on to, okay, we want to make sure that everybody gets opportunity to talk. Okay, so, Hilda, uh, we got to move on. Anybody else in the public, if you want to talk now? Go ahead.
All right, hey, Randy, I got a, uh, your paperwork here from your city codes, and they go, it's five dash three dash sixteen, note number two. It says, "In no instance shall resident or adjoining R two lots be closer than eight feet except on the side next to a street or corner lot, which shall be fifteen feet deep. If a garage is present or a development on a reverse lot, street, set, side setback shall be twenty feet." I don't understand, where are you getting your five feet from?
I'll give you the citation, you can look it up. Um, it is, here's the setback standards.
We also provided, Mr. Cuzneros, we provided a copy of the setback standards, uh, to you, and I'm sure that's one that...
This is what I'm reading it from, what you gave me.
Okay, yeah, so he'll, he'll be referencing that.
It's, it's under table eight, if you've, um, got that. And it's on, um, page five dash three dash sixteen. And you look under, there's, uh, table eight, Building Structure Setback Requirements, is the title of it, all setback measured in feet. And then you look, look at R two, and you go across, says Minimum Side Yard Setback, and it has five. And there's a little, um, um, two, and you go to the notes. And, um, this says that, um, "In no instance shall resident on an adjoining R two lot be closer than eight feet, except on the side next to a street on a corner lot, which shall be fifteen." So, maybe that's where you're getting the fifteen. But that, there isn't an adjacent, um, um, resident here that this applies to. Um, and so, and this is not a, because it says, "Or is developing on a reverse corner lot," but this is not a reverse corner lot, where the setback would be twenty feet. And so, you're correct in looking at these, um, setback standards, but all these notes, um, modify things. And so, in this particular case, we go with the five feet. So, that's how I came up with that.
Thank you, Randy. Any further questions? Any other members from the public?
It's me, Hilda, again. Going back...
Let me give a, hold on, let me make sure that everybody else, uh, has an opportunity to ask questions. I mean, just find out if, is anybody else from the public that want to say something? Anybody else?
Um, when Randy, whenever you meet with Hilda, can you give me a call? I'd be glad to go and show up and answer any questions she may have.
Okay, what's your name?
Martha.
Okay, you want to make a comment, or you're just stating that you're available?
No, I'm available to me with her whenever she wants, I can answer any questions.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what kind of questions you work for the city that you could answer this? Uh, you know, where you could answer this type of question?
Okay, let's move on. Hilda, you have any further questions? Because we need to move on to the council comments.
Uh, I guess profits is over safety. Uh, you know, I'm still waiting, you know, what would be the recommendation from you guys at this point?
Okay, let me, uh, move a little forward to the council comments, okay? Um, so, Maria Batista, any comments or questions?
When this was presented to us, um, I already forgot the date, but whenever this was presented to us, I think we were all under the, we, we looked at it differently. It wasn't presented in the way that, that you're discussing, um, tonight with us in the matter of safety for the children. And I, I understand, um... And I, I understand, um, all your concerns that you have here. The whole process, it, it just sounds like it was just a big cluster. You sending in a letter, no response, two week turnaround, um, another time was for you to respond and then out of the office, uh, no response, and then we had our council meeting. So again, we, the information that's, that's being shared with us currently, again, when, when I imagine this, when I look at it, I envision it, so I, I, I saw a site plan. Um, again, children in this area as a high traffic area and a school, well, out, right outside of a school zone, but high traffic. I, I worked in at eight forty-eight Prusso. I was there for three years and then I was at the other end at the Gafé Municipal. Um, so again, the traffic between that Prusso area is, is very high. Um, so again, my question for that was when the, when, uh, Mr. Randy spoke of the survey, was that the traffic surveyor that did that and, and at what time, I mean, what time of day? I mean, because that really does matter. I, I guess that there was a comment, a comment made that there's no traffic out in that area, only when schools in session. Well, that's the most important time of the year when it comes to our children, um, and safety. Uh, I've seen that corner, I was supervisor over there, he's got them going to, and that's like a hub, that's the hub for everybody to be dropping off their kids from the Child Development Center to middle school, the elementary school, then moving forward all the way down to Peach to go to high school. Um, and again, I, I just wanna know when, when was that? I mean, because to me, I'm seeing it as a very dangerous area and I think that's more the point that, um, Mr. Cisneros wants to, to convey. And not having that kinda information the night that, that we went, I would have probably reconsidered, you know, maybe this is more towards a, um, and I'm glad that, that you brought it to, um, the Traffic Committee and to Chief Soria to take a look at this and try to mitigate what we can do with, with traffic. I, I'm not against what, what, what the developer wants to do because again, that, that discussion that night was that he did all of his work in order to start, um, the process moving forward for what he needed to do on the, the lot that he purchased. But we are looking at this as a, a safety hazard. Um, and again, I, I thank you for going out there and doing all the legwork and, and getting all these signatures and rallying up the community for, for all of our children. But that's, that's, there's anything that seems to be, is that it is a high traffic area and so something does, and I, and I appreciate the work that you guys are already, that started now that it's been brought out to the attention, is that it is a, a concern for children trying to cross without parents and without traffic monitors. So again, maybe working that out with the superintendent with the school over there, um, because he would be in charge of both the Child Development Center, the Elementary School and the Middle School there in order to get our children to school, to and from school safely. And again, I, I understand your concern with the parking on the curb because those are blind. And even going out there and looking at it, again, I, I know that, that, hearing that all the paperwork was done correctly, um, all the numbers checked out, you know, you're dotting your i's. But when you look at the shed that you're speaking of, it, it's really out there. And again, if they're using that, that alleyway to get at the driveway, again, they're just gonna pop right out there on that sidewalk. And that is a, that's, that's dangerous as well. You know, people are gonna be, you know, living there, it's gonna be used more than it was in the past.
Thank you, Katalina Batista. Uh, continuing on with the discussion, um, council member Kang, anything to add, or say, or state?
Yeah, I got nothing, thank you.
I pretend, Garcia, anything else?
Negative, negative.
Okay, and for myself, uh, obviously I appreciate, uh, whenever, uh, public, um, you know, organizes and speaks up for their concerns and the community's well-being. So I'm very appreciative of Hilda and, uh, her group, uh, coming forth and expressing their concern. Um, just from reading, um, just from, uh, reading the, uh, questions and comments, it seems like, uh, you know, the parking lot thing was, uh, described or explained by Randy in regards to the handicap and compact, uh, parking, uh, and, and those kinds of dwellings and requirements. Um, um, regards to the Safety Committee or the Traffic Committee working on traffic, you know, back to, um, you know, light, a crosswalk, uh, stop, I think it would be more efficient. I know some cities have those bumps, not necessarily a bump, but the different, uh, bumps on the road, um, to have cars slowed down. It seems like, uh, there's a requirement, uh, for the alley improvement already in place according to what was reported by Randy, if correct? That's a, some requirement to update and fix or make sure the alley is appropriate and, and making sure that we add some kind of a traffic solution there, uh, when people are exiting through the alleyway. Um, uh, we're gonna provide records regarding the accuracy of the measurements, uh, according to our senior manager, um, and see what else. Uh, obviously there's, uh, ongoing concern of traffic in that area, uh, during school hours, um, especially. And I think it's, it's an ongoing issue that's been happening even before, uh, adding duplexes. I mean, it's, it's, as the city grows, uh, there's more and more traffic as people go to middle school, Child Development, the school down, the elementary school, uh, you know, cross town traffic and, and going, going. So I think it's, it's not an isolated thing to this project. I mean, obviously, uh, an addition of cars, uh, to the area is gonna increase it, but I think considering that there's hundreds of cars going through there in the mornings, uh, it's something the city really needs to take, uh, action as soon as possible in regards to mitigating traffic. Um, I, uh, absolutely understand where they're coming from. I think we should continue on working with them, um, you know, explaining things and, uh, having discussions because obviously they're invested in their community and they wanna resolve these concerns. Um, children's safety is, uh, almost important to all the council members up here, like they assure you of that. Uh, so we, I would like for us to, you know, uh, continue the discussions and talk about that traffic situation and that, uh, and that, um, and the intersection, um, you know, come up with some kinda plan in that intersection as soon as possible and how we can address it. Um, like I said, collaborate with the school district, the Child Development Center, maybe having a crosswalk person there every morning, that'd be great. Um, and, and, you know, even education, uh, and some other efforts to work through that part, uh, will be very important. So I appreciate, um, all the efforts done by the community members and we should, uh, we know, continue, um, working with them, hopefully, if you reach out to them and, and good community, Randy as well, please, uh, just continue on, uh, disc, having those discussions. Very important. Uh, and the project is important in regards to the housing element that's needed in the city. Um, so I, I see that part as well from the developer. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that we are fair and consistent and, uh, address everybody's concerns as best we can, absolutely, okay? Um, so let's, uh, we need to move on, I know. Go ahead.
Can I mention one thing, Juan? Can you give me a second?
Yes, real quick, please. Yes, real quick.
Um, our thing is, we don't, we, we are, we are asking for it to be reconsidered to where it's not so many units or it's a single home, to where it's something more reasonable for that area. That's what we're asking.
Councilmember Kang, this is, uh, from Mayor...
You can have more reasonable, you can have that plan, one of the numbers, that setup of it, the amount...
Sorry, okay, hold on. Hold on. Okay, go ahead, Mary Beth. Yeah, go ahead.
I think, uh, it's been close to the, uh, public now and she's had ample time to, um, talk about this, so, uh, are we on, um, council member's time now?
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm, that's my, I'm just saying that, I mean, to give the opportunity...
Okay. Yes, Hilda, uh, we'll continue having, we'll reach out to you and continue having discussions, okay?
Okay.
All right, so we'll just move... Yeah, we're going off to item number six regarding discussion of potential direction regarding tobacco regulations to reduce youth tobacco access and use in the city.
Good evening, council members of the public. This is Trevor Tanayuchi from the City Attorney's Office. Um, I'll try to keep this brief, I know it's getting rather late and, um, I think there might have been hopefully some members of youth that also wanted to give some public comment on this topic. Um, you may recall several months ago, the California Health Collaborative made a presentation to the City Council regarding tobacco use, um, specifically addressing vaping and flavored tobacco in the city. Um, it was a very powerful presentation. Within that presentation, there was also members of the youth who gave testimonies and their own personal experiences with tobacco use, um, and how it impacted their own public health, um, and circumstances. So based on that council discussion, um, and presentation, the direction we received was to come back to council with several options for consideration to address, um, tobacco use in, um, you know, specifically amongst the youth within the city of Livingston. Um, so as an overview, um, tobacco sales and tobacco use are significant public health, um, and social, and social issues that impact the community. Um, in the absence of a, a comprehensive federal law regulation over tobacco and tobacco products, many public health organizations, uh, are seeking to implement measures at the local level since the local levels can, most of the time have the most direct and immediate impacting on addressing those public health and social issues that stem from tobacco sales and tobacco use. And so the two items that we are bringing to council tonight are for discussion and, and direction from the council as to whether these are options that the council wishes to pursue are the, um, implementation and establishment of a tobacco retailer's license within the city. And the second option, um, which works in conjunction with the tobacco retailer's license is, uh, establishing distance and proximity requirements specific to potentially youth-oriented facilities such as schools, daycare centers, um, youth centers, libraries, places, um, where youth frequent. So just an overview of, of the city's current tobacco regulations, there are none, um, specifically addressing tobacco sales, uh, where they can, aside from the zoning requirements regarding retail. So the tobacco retailer license really helps establish, um, a system by which city, the city can, can regulate tobacco retailers. Um, recently, you may be aware of the state and government decision sign SB seventy-nine three, which bans the sale of flavored tobacco products in the state. There are many components to this, this legislation which includes a specific definition of what flavored tobacco entails. Um, it does include flavored e-cigarettes or vapes, tea juice, uh, cartridges, menthol-flavored cigarettes, uh, flavored little cigars and cigarrillos, um, and loose leaf roiled tobacco, flavored smoked tobacco and flavored tobacco product enhancers. Uh, specifically, the law doesn't apply to the sale of flavored Shisha, hookah, premium cigars over twelve dollars, um, and loose leaf pipe tobacco. The law takes effect, um, January first, twenty twenty-one. Um, at that time, all retailers in the state will be prohibited from selling the flavored tobacco products I just mentioned. In addition to those prohibitions, the law also establishes a, a pretty low monetary penalty for violations and violations of state law are only infractions. Um, so there is room in the law, the law explicitly states that a city can adopt standards that are more restrictive than the state, so long as they're not less restrictive. So there is room for the city to implement its own program and I, the recommendation or proposal we're putting forth for discussion right now, um, is a minimal level of regulation. It's sort of the entry level which is creating the tobacco retail license, uh, program. So some policy considerations regarding, uh, establishing a tobacco retailer license program. Um, it has shown to be an effective method by which local jurisdictions help prevent youth access to tobacco products. Um, as the research shows, a significant number of tobacco users who begin using tobacco products do so in their youth, um, begin so with flavored tobacco products and generally tobacco products and the ability to access those tobacco products, whether they're, they're close to a store that sells them or through other means. Um, the federal legislation that's currently being debated in Washington, um, including some actions that have been taken, uh, recently, are, are, they're not comprehensive methods to address, um, flavored tobacco products, um, and tobacco products in general. Um, and so those are just important considerations to take for discussion. Um, if we could go to the next slide. Tobacco retailer license regulations can also help reduce tobacco-related health inequity, um, by specifically addressing tobacco industry's measures, which specifically target minority communities. Um, so creating this license, um, which would create a regulatory scheme and, uh, the city can take a, a very modest approach by just requiring all tobacco retailers within the city to obtain a license or take a more proactive approach, which would be imposing additional regulations and rules for those tobacco retailers to abide by. Um, you know, the more advanced you get in this program, the, the more tools you can utilize to help combat some of the, the tactics used by the tobacco industry that specifically targets, uh, youth, um, and especially youth in minority communities. So that is the first option up for discussion and consideration, um, and direction on as to whether it's something the council is interested in pursuing. The second option, which, well, really works in tandem with the retail license program and is, is an additional measure that's implemented into it, is establishing specific distance and proximity requirements, um, away from youth-oriented facilities. Um, and I apologize, there's some typos on the slide, but these are important mechanisms to, you know, the previous agenda item, there was a lot of concern about youth and how many of the youth in the city of Livingston walk to school. Um, you know, oftentimes walking by places that sell tobacco can be enticing. Um, even though there is this new flavored tobacco ban, there is always, uh, you know, this situation where if there is easy access, um, from youth to be able to access tobacco, it could entice them to start the habit of using tobacco. So these are two, um, policy regulations for consideration and discussion and direction on regards to whether the council would like to pursue them.
Thank you, Trevor, for that quick summary. I appreciate it, how you worked very hard on this. Um, then open up to the public, uh, any public comment on this item? Okay, then move on to the council...
Yeah, this is, uh, oh, go ahead. Yeah, this is Sean, um, a business owner in Livingston. Um, the concern that we have is that, um, the, the, uh, the tobacco restrictions, uh, related to menthol, um, as a business owner, we, we don't, um, uh, sell to and, uh, to minors, um, and that minors have, uh, if, if that's the case, we have ATF that enforces these regulatory, um, um, laws. Uh, it, it seems that the, with the minors or the, the kids are, are obtaining these menthol products by either their parents or, um, what we call shoulder tapping, um, that happens on a premises. I think the better way to address this, uh, issue would be, um, uh, some programs in place, uh, uh, and it could be to the licensing measure, um, uh, to enforce those, um, the folks that are doing shoulder tap, tapping, uh, or buying these products for, uh, the youth and also educating parents or friends or whoever that are of age to buy these products. Um, I, I don't think it's fair and equity in regards to, um, limiting, uh, or not selling these, uh, products as a business standpoint, uh, because, and I'm not saying that, uh, kids are not important, which, uh, you know, as, uh, a parent myself, uh, they are important. Um, but as a business and economic standpoint, we have to balance the safety and the economic needs of the city as well, so, um, and, um, to that point, uh, uh, there is a referendum in place, uh, or that's filed again... So, and to that point, there is a referendum in place or that's filed against SB 793, and the signatures are, I'm sure, confident that the signatures will be met, the signatures will get the required amounts that are needed. And personally, I believe that what we as a city should do is stand by on this and basically table this item until January first of twenty twenty-one and see if the referendum has any impact on this issue and if it requires this to be a ballot item for November twenty twenty-two. So that's just a piece of what we believe as a business owner in the city. And I think that if we limit it, limit access to the adults that are capable of making a wise decision for their own health and safety, they're going to go out of city, state, county, to obtain these items anyways and start a black market. So, and I'm not opposed to having some type of licensing effects in place, but a reasonable licensing would be most cost-effective to businesses which are impacted by just the economy. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate your comment. Anybody else in the public?
Yeah, hi. This is Mandeep Singh here in Livingston. I work with JuGotta Movement, and we have a club at Livingston High School. We work primarily with the youth, and we have done a few webinars around tobacco prevention with the California Health Collaborative. So, I definitely want to represent State Centers and Service Society at Livingston High School as us backing this initiative by California Health Collaborative. While I do appreciate Sean's comments on the, you know, sort of like shoulder tapping and sort of how it's like on the adults, you know, it's important for us to realize, like, we can't leave it to adults to sort of like look out, as sometimes we like to say, like, they can make their own decisions. We know people cannot make their own decisions, as we have seen when we opened up the parks and Merced County kind of opened up with COVID, how Livingston got hit really, really bad, right? This COVID situation has shown us that people are not well-informed, and especially around tobacco use and youth prevention. A lot of these flavored tobacco, sort of these kind of items, even though we like to say that adults buy them, they're all marketed to kids. They all look like cartoons, like cereal boxes, they all have like these funky colors. The point is to get the youth addicted to these things while they're young, because then you have a customer for life, right? And this has been shown with the vaping, the jewel situation, where this is like an epidemic in all high schools, all throughout the nation, really. So I would hope, I don't know what discussion will follow this, but I definitely think this is worth the tobacco retailer license at the minimum, I think we should, City of Livingston should establish. And definitely, you know, getting sort of these items like away from the walk to school, right? When kids are walking to school, when kids are walking home from the park, when they pass these doors that, you know, have in the window these advertisements for these tobacco products, that there's research done on this, right? California Health Collaborative has done presentations based on this that show that this has been marketed to the youth, because, I mean, we can definitely like submit, or everyone can kind of research on their own as well, that this, the tobacco companies specifically target the youth, because like I said earlier, that is, then you have a customer for life if you can get them addicted at an early age. So, while the businesses, we do appreciate the need for that, you know, the economics of the situation, we definitely need to take the health of our kids into like the kind of the driver's seat, right? There should never be a situation where we say, you know, the kids are important, we care about the health of our kids, but, there's no but there. Like, the buck stops there. If we are not doing everything we can to give our children a sort of like head start on life and give this sort of like
Thank you, sir.
A safe place where they're not, you know, bombarded with these images and these opportunities to get addicted to these things. I think that would be great. Thank you for the council for hearing us out, and thank you for everyone for the meeting. I know it's been a long night. So, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Officer, this is Sean again. Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Sean, real quick.
Okay. I just want to touch base on that comment there. I would invite the council members to please take a drive to your local convenience stores and places where they do sell tobacco products and maybe look around and see if they sell these type of products where they're portrayed as cookies and other items for vaping stuff. Just take a look, I think it's a false narrative. I think that when you see menthol cigarettes that are from Marlboro, there's no cookie or vanilla wafer stuff on them. I understand that that product was out there, but it has been stopped. And I relate the topic to flavored alcohol. It's the same concept. If, you know, flavored alcohol, you know, teenagers are getting drunk every weekend as well, which they shouldn't be, but there's still flavored alcohol that's out there. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I'm going to go ahead and move it to council.
I have a public comment. This is Bow.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, um, I
How you doing, Bow?
Chris, good, good. Thank you. Chris is on the line, and Daniella is on the line. So, Chris, whenever you're ready.
Go ahead, guys.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, hold on. Today, I will be talking about my youth coalition today, and I will be talking about this subject. Let me pull up this thing. Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. I know it's been a long night. I'm going to make sure as short as possible. Good evening, mayor, council members, community members of Livingston. My name is Christian, and I am a resident of Livingston High School, of the Livingston High School. I'm a student here in Livingston, and most importantly, a youth advocate. I'm here tonight to not reshare the significant data sets and big tobacco history on targeting deadly products to vulnerable populations, such as the youth, like myself and my peers. I'm here tonight to simply share my personal opinion and brainstorm ideas on the impact tobacco has and the probabilities of its impact on the future, on communities, and how the decisions we make today can impact the future. We're facing a big problem, and I'd like to compare tobacco to global warming. If we don't do anything about it, the problem worsens. Big tobacco companies are using psychological tactics and tricks to persuade our leaders and the young generation, which will be our future generation leaders. And these tactics are meant to keep us in the dark and keep them in business. That's why this youth coalition is here too, for the community, and our duty is to bring awareness and to think outside the box. So here's my analogy. Outside the box are issues in the future, and inside the box are issues and reality we are currently facing, and I'm sure you guys know that. We don't see the outside. We don't see the issues outside of the box. We tend to ignore them till they're, till it's too late or they're too big. We tend to just think inside the box, and this is not focusing on how our decisions today can impact the future, our kids, our grandkids, and so forth. Our lack to think outside the box as leaders in the decision-making process now will influence the way we make decisions in our future. We need to break this cycle. We need to shift the way we approach decision-making and make decisions and make effective decision-making for the betterment of our people first. Nonprofit, the people at the end of the day are the profit, and we will make the profit if leaders and the communities can build the community to the best of its abilities and the best we know how to. First the people, and the profit. Thank you. That is my statement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any, who else is going to speak?
Daniella?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, good evening, mayor, city council members, and community members of Livingston. My name is Daniella. I am a Livingston High School student and a youth advocate. First of all, I would like to say that Livingston is my home. I've moved around a lot as a kid, but Livingston has been the longest place I've lived in. I like the community and I love the people here. So that's not to say that there isn't room for improvement. When I sat down to really think about what I wanted to say to you all today, it boiled down to frustration. Why is it taking so long to implement positive change that will obviously help everyone? This is not a personal attack, but I feel that everyone wants to hear youth voices, but no one actually wants to do anything with them. Why do the lives of me and my peers have to come second to money and profit? I really hate the idea that me and my peers will just become a statistic that everyone will just throw away. These companies and these products have taken so much from us already. They have taken our time, our money, our youth, our health, and eventually our lives. My hope is that after several attempts of educating you, the mayor, city council members, and the community, that all this effort will lead to action to better our community. I want to see clean air in our parks and especially in our school bathrooms. I don't want to have to hold my breath every single time I try to wash my hands. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Daniella?
Can I speak to anyone quick?
Yes, go ahead.
One? Okay, thank you. This is Bow. I'm a community advocate. Good evening, everyone. I work for a local nonprofit called California Health Collaborative, and we've been working tirelessly in the community of Livingston alongside Livingston Cali Youth. And over the past two years, we have collected data on community's perspective on reducing youth access to flavored tobacco products. We have gone up to the stores and done store observation, all of which has been shared in previous council presentations. We've done countless education presentations for parents at schools, local orgs like Livingston Community Health. We're running campaigns right now on education on tobacco and vaping in the community and on social media. Aside from that, I do want to make a mention of the great presentation that was done by Trevor. We know that a hundred communities in California have adopted strong local tobacco retail ordinance in an effort to reduce youth access to tobacco products. With that, there are tons of resources available that we can provide and help the city and retailers and assist them with the coordination of this policy and assist streamline healthy retail priorities. So this is providing sample initial letters addressing the new policy. This is educational retail visits to provide healthy retail environment education to help communities imagine how policies can support healthy retail that showcases the key elements of retail environment, and this includes advertising, displays, inventory, and to portray a store that promotes health at every turn. And I also want to make a mention, city manager Jose mentioned about the nonprofit that provides small business support. The Cali Youth Coalition would love to push that, would love to visit the local businesses and promote that service. Stores can have a significant impact on our community. In many places, residents lack access to fresh fruits and vegetables, but can find cheap tobacco and alcohol all too easily. So this imbalances the serious health consequences, and in the United States, tobacco use, poor nutrition, and excessive alcohol use is among the leading cause of preventable death, and we hear that all too often. So, before I go, I just want to make a note that's worth mentioning, and that is to help paint the picture of what Christian mentioned about thinking outside the box. And it is in this recent report that came out in July, and it's called "Healthcare Cost Saving" to the California Tobacco Control Program, and that from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand eighteen, Steve Arnold and Jim Lightwood from the Department of the University of California, San Francisco, found that since nineteen eighty-nine, California Tobacco Program have prevented a total healthcare cost. They have prevented five hundred billion dollars in healthcare costs in nineteen eighty-nine. So that is outside the box. That's it for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bow, for the comments. I appreciate it. I appreciate the kids staying up this late and school night and, you know, expressing their concerns and their thoughts. Any other members in the public want to comment?
Hi, hi, yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay, one at a time?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, as a property owner and a store owner myself, I agree with the comments that Sean made.
Okay, good. Could you please identify yourself, your name, please? For the record. Okay, let's move on. Anybody else from the public?
Hi, yes, this is Mr. Moran, if I may speak.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Jose Moran, P.O. Box eight forty-seven, Livingston, California. I think this is a great opportunity for the city council. This group has been working for, actually for almost two years, if not over two years, bringing educational programs to the city of Livingston and its residents. And as an educator, for the last few years, we have been able to see firsthand the health problem that the access to tobacco items by teenagers is causing and leading to bigger problems. Obviously, this is a gateway to bigger issues and not just flavored tobacco, but this is like a door that is being wide open for kids to get used to flavored products. And so, I just want to say that this is a great opportunity to the council to be able to move forward and for a potential item to be able to have a restriction, if not a total ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, I'm going to move it over to council now. Councilmember Batista, any comments, thoughts?
Oh, yes. I understand. I am one of the biggest child advocates that might come across Livingston. But I see all the points, and I want to say the youth that spoke tonight, it's just a lot of courage to come out and advocate for something that you feel very strongly on. There were a few things that were mentioned, and I know, maybe it was Christian, you know, making the analogy between the global warming and what could possibly happen with children, our youth, and your peers engaging in tobacco activities. Again, I'd like to take a look at the surveys or the research that you've done to know those numbers and to know exactly what it is that on campus that is happening. They did hear the young girl mention, I don't remember your name, I'm sorry, but she did mention something about having to hold your breath while you're in the bathroom. Well, that, that is shameful to say that that's happening in our bathrooms, and shame on our high school district for letting that happen. So again, having and taking the responsibility of preventing everything is on all of us, from parents Um, from parents, especially your first educators. And I heard a lot of comments, um, it was, the other gentleman, uh, spoke on how there was not so much trust that youth and adults can make decisions on our own. Well, I beg to differ. Um, if we educate our public enough on the health that we want our children to be at best, okay, we're talking about the Healthcare Savings Act that Val spoke on and how we wanna push and push. She also mentioned about the, the lack of fresh fruits and vegetables. Again, I mentioned that earlier when my, in my, uh, council, uh, comments, that, uh, you know, I wanna advocate more on that, because when you wanna look at the overall health of children, it's not just with tobacco, the alcohol, we're looking at obesity, that's a bigger problem. So when you wanna look at packaging and how marketing works, I, I see that, I understand that. Um, but we can't, we can't put that all on our, our retailers. That's a lack of education. And from what I gather and what I'm hearing is that you guys, um, on your coalition and on your, uh, committee that you, you have formed and that you've brought to the council several times, and we've met with you on, uh, another private occasion, um, and had talks. Again, I am for the education part. That does lie on us as adults to teach our children better health habits all around. Um, and marketing, packaging, hey, you know what our kids go to the store? They're picking up those Hot Cheetos, that's a cute package. And that's more dangerous to them than I feel that, that they're gonna, they're- I would say nine times out of ten, they would pick up a Cheeto package than, than, uh, something flavored, but I, I, I seriously doubt, and I, I, I don't know Sean, but he's a business leader here in Livingston. But I've been in con- the convenience stores, I've been in riding Dollar General, Liberty, and Rancho. Everybody that sells tobacco products have them behind a counter. They're not accessible, and if this is happening, if they're doing that shoulder tapping, well, again, that's bad education. And for, you know, speaking on your, you know, if you're on campus and you have peers, I, I want to be confident that you're saying, hey, you know that's bad for you? And actually advocating that part to, to everybody that's, that's engaging in that type of activity. 'Cause again, when we promote athletics, when we promote, um, other opportunities for, for children to be healthy, I, I just don't see what, what kind of numbers that, that you have that are wanting us to enforce some of these, um, are not enforced, but to discuss and take direction on some regulations. And, uh, Sean did bring up a good point about, um, some of the, the, um, I forget what he said, but it, it wouldn't take place till twenty twenty-one. So again, this is only for discussion and potential direction. So if we could just hold off on discussing it till we see how, how the counterpart, um, uh, plays out with, with Newton. Um, so again, again, I appreciate everything that has come out tonight, but health, overall health, to me is, is, is important, 'cause we do have to fight the, the battles of obesity, which is more prevalent in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Batista, uh, Councilmember King?
Yes, I agree with Maria on some parts, and even with Sean, and the students also. Uh, I think this is a big discussion that all five councilmen, four councilmembers and the mayor should be here before we even take any action. So, just on that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember King, uh, Mayor Pretend Garcia?
Um, I also agree with, uh, both council members, um, we should hold off on this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend Garcia. Uh, for me, I'm very proud, uh, you know, I've met with you guys several times. I'm a full supporter of your efforts, and I, I really, uh, I, you know, commend you for stepping up as a youth in our community to advocate for what you think is right, uh. And I also agree with Councilmember Batista and director of councilmembers that it's, you know, you know, it's important, and there's, or Councilmember Batista's, uh, holistic view of preventing ills of, for society, for youth. Uh, but this is one piece that we could, you know, discuss and hopefully do something to prevent it. I think everyone needs to pitch in and, uh, you know, attack it from all sides. You know, obviously, parents have a responsibility, uh, school has a responsibility, um, the community as a whole has a responsibility, uh, neighbors and community members. But also, the council as policymakers of the city has a responsibility to, uh, lead and retain, uh, some action. Um, so I, I, I understand absolutely what Sean, uh, as a business owner was stating, uh, as well, you know? Uh, I know there's a lot of local-owned businesses in town, uh, you know, uh, that are affected by it, and I do not see them actively selling to minors or purposely, you know, uh, doing that at all, you know? Uh, but, uh, youth, I'm very proud of you guys, uh, for, you know, getting on the line and stating your concerns. Um, Val, you've done a great, uh, you know, service to our community by, uh, leading these kids to, to, uh, you know, voicing their, uh, their concerns. Amber, I appreciate you helping me out with this, 'cause, uh, uh, you know, I was the one that, uh, kind of worked with you a bit there, but I know you took it on, and I appreciate your hard work on this. I do agree that I think the full council needs to be here in order for us to further discuss and, um, and, and vote on this or, or give direction. Uh, well, obviously, the three of, three of our councilmembers are stating that. Um, and then also give an opportunity to other people that got off the line, 'cause it's almost eleven o'clock, to get an opportunity to voice their concerns or their thoughts about this. Uh, I'm gonna just say real quick, in regards to me, I am supportive of, uh, looking into the tobacco retail license, uh, to create some kind of revenue, uh, for prevention efforts, uh, education efforts, uh, that city or in collaboration with a school district could, could do, uh, to educate parents, but especially Spanish-speaking parents, um, and parents in general in regards to the ills of, of flavored tobacco. A lot of, uh, parents are working nowadays, long hours, and don't even know how vaping product looks nowadays with, uh, you know, all the different technology and all that stuff. Uh, you know, we're just not educated enough as parents of, of what's going on in the school. So maybe some kind of, uh, fee that it's fair for local business owners, small business owners, that, you know, aren't gonna affect them too much, um, to have that funds available for, uh, that kind of outreach. Um, so I am supportive of something like that, absolutely. Uh, but I've, I've stated by our three, uh, councilmembers, we would like to move this on to another meeting where the full council's here, uh, give an opportunity for further discussion. Um, and, uh, for favor, perhaps, you know, we could put it on in the next council meeting or, uh, and, and, and with less items, so the kids could not stay up this late and, uh, have a, a, a more input and maybe quite even ask more of the special, uh, asking questions and stuff like that. So, everybody, I really appreciate all the hard work, I'm proud of you kids. Um, so we'll, we'll move it on to the next meeting, okay?
Councilmember Aguilar, this is Trevor, telling you through the city attorney's office. Um, yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments, and I just wanted to clarify, 'cause I think there are a lot of different, um, options and perspectives and viewpoints put forth, um, all, which I think are very valid concerns from both the store owner, um, perspective, the resident perspective, the youth perspective. Um, so just, just so everyone's clear and the councilmembers are clear, you know, the proposal is just establishing a tobacco retailer license. So this would just be a simple license that allows the city then to, at any future date, if it wishes to, um, impose additional regulations. So the proposal that, you know, from the city attorney's office that we're bringing forward is not a ban on flavored tobacco or pack sizes or prices. It's really just establishing this regulatory scheme, which would give the city the mechanism, if it wanted to, to, um, explore those options down the road. So just a pointed clarification, and of course, if any of the councilmembers have questions about that, we're more than happy to answer them. But, uh, thank you for the time, um, and we'll look forward to the next presentation, uh, the next meeting or the meeting after.
Absolutely, absolutely, Trevor, I appreciate it. And definitely, yes, that's correct, what you stated, it's, uh, it's not necessarily on flavored tobacco, but it's just tobacco in general. Um, so I appreciate it, and I look forward to having further discussion in our next or following meeting. So thank you, everybody. So we'll be moving on to item number seven. Um, the rest of the items, eight, nine, and ten, will be moved to a different meeting, uh, following meeting. Uh, we're mo- doing item number seven due to the importance of this item. Uh, so it's regarding the resolution authorizing the implementation of the reserve officer program and related budget amendment.
Hey, Travis, are you on the line?
Yes.
Hey, this is Councilmember King.
Hey, uh, whenever we talk about the police, uh, budget or anything after the police department, I always excuse myself. So I'm gonna do that again as well for this discussion.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Councilmember King, I believe this will be the, the last item on the agenda. We're moving the rest to the following meeting.
Okay, guys, then you guys have a good night.
Thank you for your night.
You hear me? Oh, okay, I can hear you, okay. All right, what I'm gonna bring, report to you today is, um, obviously with, um, with, with COVID, um, and, and budgetary issues that, that, uh, during the budget, budget, uh, workshop that came forth, obviously, we had recent positions, which kind of left staff, uh, at the police department, uh, about a few officers. So at the direction of, uh, council, uh, we, we came together with the support to actually try to, uh, alleviate some of those issues with, uh, with not having the proper staffing for, for the street. So what we put together was, uh, two, uh, two part-time reserve officers, which are basically the same train as a, as a, a normal officer. They're just called reserves off, reserve officers, they're part-time. Um, and I'm assuming this, depending on how long this would go, if it would be a part-time or, or, I'm talking about a temporary, depending on how we're looking next year. Um, I mean, you can end up doing this, uh, so, uh, I, I did it as a reserve. I started for a four-year, uh, but anyway, uh, the cost is obviously a lot less than what a, a normal officer would be. A normal officer runs about ninety-five thousand for one officer. Obviously, it's forty hours a week with benefits. Uh, the cost of two reserve officers for twenty-four hours a week would be seventy-five. Again, this would, uh, greatly improve, uh, how we do things on the street, uh, provide a lot more safety cushion for the citizen chair and air and meeting. I believe it's really needed. Um, like, again, two officers and, and we can, with them, we can pretty much, we can pretty, like, put them where we need it, because they don't fall within MOU, so we don't have to meet those guidelines like that, some of them, not that we wanna take advantage of them, 'cause we can still, if we need to at certain places, we can utilize them in those, in those areas. Especially like what's going on now. Uh, we can obviously beef up, like the weekends, uh, and several officers on the street, so, curve, what's involved. So basically, that's what, uh, the staff report is reporting to you now, is the approval of, uh, two part-time reserve officers, um, at, at the cost that I mentioned. Um, so if you have any questions, go ahead.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any members of the public wanna comment? Okay, thank you, um, council, Councilmember Batista, any, any questions, comments?
I wanna go ahead and make a motion, um, for the resolution authorizing the application implemented.
Right, uh, Mayor Pretend Garcia. Uh, Mayor Pretend Garcia, any questions, comments?
No, um, I just think it'd be a great, uh, a great, uh, program to start, and, um, thank you, chief, for all your hard work getting, uh, this item ready for presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend.
Uh, for myself, Councilmember Aguilar, I think it's, um, you know, obviously, we voiced and expressed a lot for reserve programs in place. Um, so I appreciate the hard work that you guys, uh, were able to put together this and, and this moving forward, it's obviously a need. Um, but, uh, you know, as, uh, we have talked about, you know, in addition to bodies and patrols out there, uh, you know, let's continue on with the community policing and, and, uh, getting to know and trust our, uh, officers to, by the public, okay? Um, so go ahead, Councilmember Batista.
Do we have a motion by Councilmember Batista? Do we have a second?
Uh, second, uh, however, we could barely hear you.
We have a second by Mayor Pretend Garcia. Monica, call call?
Call call, Councilmember Batista? Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Garcia?
Uh, yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero.
Okay, everybody, I've mentioned, uh, previously, items eight, nine, and ten will move to the next council meeting, or, council meeting is adjourned at eleven oh five P.M. Thank you.